Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council work session. Our work sessions are informal and we go directly to our agenda. Tonight's meeting is being held both virtually and in person. Council members and our staff are in the council chambers with us. And our guests are on Zoom. And you can join us by going to burnsville.gov/meetings or watch us on Comcast Channel 16 or 859. For anyone else that you can join us on Zoom, and that is zoom.us/join, or by calling 651-372-8299 if you want to comment. And more information is on our meeting webpage and in the console package. So we'll go directly to our first item on the agenda, and that is Representative Jess Hansen is presenting to us, and it's an update on legalization of marijuana. Representative Hansen, welcome.
Well, thank you, everybody, for having me. This is a really exciting topic for me to talk about. As some of you may know, before I was elected to public office, I organized alongside Minnesotans who were seeking to end cannabis prohibition. So I have a number of years of experience looking at what other states have done, listening to what Minnesotans want, and making sure we're talking to local governments and business owners, law enforcement, and all of the different angles that cannabis legalization comes from. Everybody has a different perspective about their feelings towards cannabis. And I acknowledge that when I come into this work, just to say that as elected officials, it's our job to represent what the majority of my community or the Minnesota community is looking to do. And in this case, cannabis legalization is something that the majority of Minnesotans and Americans are looking for. And so as we approach this subject, recognizing any internal biases we might have towards the plant itself or the people who consume it, I think that's just important for us to just sit and recognize that for a moment. And the goal here is to build the best model for full legalization in the country after learning lessons from a number of other states, what worked, what didn't work. So we intend to be very thoughtful about this. We're intending to be very inclusive of all branches of government and really hearing from as many folks as possible to make this the best model so that we're setting ourselves up for success. Well, I'll start with talking about really the history of prohibition in this presentation. I'll talk about the progress of legalization, a little bit more about who supports it, who's collaborating in Minnesota, and what are the goals of our legal markets and these key findings from a lot of our community conversations. And then I'm also going to go over the high levels of the existing cannabis legalization bill and what that covers. And so if we think about where prohibition began, cannabis has been used for over 5,000 years by humans. But after those 5,000 years of human use, the United States enacted cannabis prohibition and began to criminalize its possession in use in the 1930s or so. President Hoover was appointed Mr. Harry Anslinger as what was called the Director of the Federal Bureau of Narcotics, which we know as the DEA today, who served in that position until 1962. So as we move through the 30s, more and more states continue to prohibit cannabis. We also saw during this time that the prison industrial complex was born. I think it's important to note that in connection with the drug war and the battles we've fought since. And in 1937, cannabis was prohibited nationwide. Moving into the 50s, the Boggs Act was passed, and that required mandatory sentencing. And various states continued to further criminalize substance use overall. Get to the 70s, and the Controlled Substances Act was passed, and cannabis became a scheduled-run drug, meaning that the government considered cannabis as dangerous as cocaine or heroin. President Nixon during this time also announced the War on Drugs alongside his aide John Ehrlichman. And then, once we get into the later 70s, by 1978, more states had decriminalized cannabis, including Minnesota, for small amounts only. Now, some of the rhetoric that was used to uplift prohibition was excessively ugly. It dehumanized people in ways that we today would, we do find entirely inappropriate. So the following slides are hurtful. They contain really violent language. And I use this in this presentation to help us understand why it is so important we continue to push for legalization today, because the roots of prohibition have been and still are very deeply rooted in racism. And so in the next slide, you'll see some of the advertisements that were used when prohibition was being kind of propped up, if you will. And what you'll notice here is a lot of fear mongering, a lot of danger, warning, death. You know, it's very inflammatory. And actually, to date, we know that cannabis, there is no such thing as a cannabis overdose, right? We don't, this is a non-lethal plant, but yet it was very much considered to be a dangerous killer drug. And this was from 1935 and 1936. The next slide, again, I want to just have a trigger warning on the contents of the things that Mr. Anslinger said when he propped up this prohibition. And so just if you're watching and you don't want to experience those things, feel free to just mute me, turn the volume all the way down. I'll give a thumbs up when it is okay to come back once this information has passed. So I'm just going to let this slide sit here for a moment and for folks watching to just hear the things that were said about cannabis consumers and see the communities that were intentionally targeted and dehumanized by the wording that was used when prohibition was put into place. And as you can see, there were specific people who were dehumanized arguably more than others. And I think it's really important that, again, we reroute ourselves and why we're fighting so hard to change this today. Okay, thumbs up, and we can go to the next slide. So clearly, prohibition was one of the many ways that racism, bias, oppression, and discrimination were enforced and empowered in the United States. President Nixon's aide John Ehrlichman, who I mentioned earlier, came clean in 2016 when he talked about his response to the launch of the War on Drugs. And he said, quote, "We knew we couldn't make it illegal to be either against the war or be black, but by getting the public to associate the hippies with marijuana and blacks with heroin, and then criminalizing both heavily, we could disrupt those communities." So clearly, the intention of the War on Drugs, cannabis prohibition being one of those, was not to bring people together. It wasn't to keep communities safer. It wasn't to keep cannabis out of the hands of kids. It had an intention, and it was a machine that was built that today is still operating in many of the same ways it was designed. So the next slide is where we'll see some of the progression of cannabis legalization, starting in the 30s. And so you can click through these slides pretty quick here, just to watch the transformation. And we'll leave it here for a second. This map was different because they changed the map, so it's not as pretty as the last ones. But this is an idea of where we are at today, with a wide array of different types of programs in different states, but with full legalization as a regulated industry, taking up a pretty significant part of the map in the dark green there. And then we have comprehensive medical programs in that real bright green. And so in any event, we can see that prohibition is coming apart around the nation in its own ways. And so what does this mean for Minnesota? What are we going to do for our program? So we can go to the next slide. So our policy remains the same while this national landscape is rapidly changing, and I believe it's time that we catch up. So the next slide here, you'll see that the majority of Minnesotans support cannabis legalization. Of over two-thirds of Americans support that. And then the next slide, we'll see that over about 16% of Minnesotans consume cannabis, which is over 680,000 people. And these are the folks who are comfortable saying that they consume cannabis. Not a lot of people have, quote unquote, "come out of the cannabis closet," per se, to admit that they use that because of the stigma that's attached to cannabis use today. So the next slide here, we'll go over some of the laws, the problems with existing cannabis laws. There are vast racial disparities in the enforcement. For example, black men in Minneapolis are over eight times more, were over eight times more likely to be arrested for cannabis charges or cannabis consumption or possession compared to white men when, in fact, they use cannabis at a very similar rate. And so the racial disparities are very loud there. Now, I will say that some cities have begun to work with their public safety departments or police departments to not necessarily enforce small amounts of cannabis possession or use. And those do have impacts on racial disparities, but we still see racial disparities because full legalization is not in effect yet. So the lack of regulation also puts consumers at risk. If you don't know what's in your product, or you don't know that your product is quality, you are at risk of consuming something that hasn't been inspected to be a quality product. And we believe that people deserve to have that information. Access for veterans is also limited. As some folks may know, cannabis is a very effective treatment for post-traumatic stress disorder. And so the access to veterans is very important. But with prohibition in place, veterans are not able to access this through the VA. And I would also say that there's a lot of people that have PTSD that would very much benefit from using cannabis but can't afford the medical program. So when we talk about this access for veterans, it's one that the VA isn't able to offer it, and two, that we have other folks who have conditions that don't have access to our medical program too. Currently, the resources spent on enforcement are ineffective. Again, if the goal is to keep cannabis out of the hands of kids, we're failing. If the goal is to keep cannabis out of high schools, we're failing. If the goal is to keep people from consuming cannabis and driving, we're failing. That's not happening today. So for the money that we're putting into prohibition, we would expect to see better results on the other side. But unfortunately, that's just not happening. And lastly, I think this is an argument that I've heard quite a bit as I was doing this work, is really it's an infringement on personal freedom. Folks are encouraged oftentimes to consume alcohol, which is a lethal drug. And we are able to regulate that and find ways to make sure that our communities stay safer, despite that being available and free on the market. But yet cannabis is less harmful in a lot of, in most ways. And yet people are criminalized or stigmatized. So in the next slide, we'll kind of go over how did we get here? What, who, who have we been talking to? Before I, or after I got into this work, the Minnesota House Democrats and the House DFL got on board and was, became in support of this effort. And what they did is they went on a tour around 15 cities. They heard from over 1,000 Minnesotans, and they asked, "What would you like to see out of a legal program?" So you can kind of see this chart on the right here where there is clearly a growing number of Minnesotans who are supporting this, and there are less Minnesotans who are opposed to it. We do have an increased number of people who are not sure, which is why forums like these are really helpful, and I think this is where we're hosting this. So HF600 is the House File Bill and Senate File 757. They were introduced this year in the legislature. And HF600 in the House was heard in many committees, and it passed in the House for the first time in history. Unfortunately, the Senate version did not go as far, and it was what we call died in the Senate in 2021. And we do have plans to continue pushing for this. So who's collaborated on this? The next couple of slides, you'll see there's a whole list of people who have collaborated. And I think this is important to see, just so folks understand who we're bringing to the table and why it's so important. So you'll see everything from education Minnesota to cannabis organizations themselves, Minnesota Social Work Association, the Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, UFCW Unions, and many more. The next slide will show you the departments that we have also talked to. The governor had directed each of the departments to come up with a plan to discuss what cannabis legalization would look like for that particular department, to make sure that our bill addressed all of their needs as well. So every department that your tax dollars support is represented in this as well. So again, the goal is to build the best model for full legalization in the country that's just equitable and responsibly accessible. And it's to establish a regulatory market that's built by and for Minnesota. And so out of all this work, the key findings that we came up with are over the next couple of slides. Minnesotans want to establish responsible regulation. That is the biggest thing we've heard, is that people said, "Just make it a regulated market" because that would address so many of the other issues that were happening. So that's step one. Minnesotans also want us to address racial disparities. Folks acknowledge and see who has been harmed by cannabis prohibition laws and have a very deep will and want and desire to make it right and to make sure we can stop those disparities, at least in this little part of the world. People also want to improve the medical cannabis program. If you know anybody who's on the medical cannabis program, I would encourage you to talk to them about what it means to them, both importantly for their medicine that they're able to access, but then also about the challenges. Folks don't always know what's, what, like, all of the strains that are used to create their products. Right now, we only have oils or vaporized products available. We do have what's called full flower and edibles being added to the program this year, but it still limits the access because there's only two companies growing this. And we want to make sure to diversify this market and make it as fair as possible to bring those costs down for people. Right now, folks have to renew their medical cannabis card right about this year. It's right before Christmas, and it's not cheap. And so I think it's just really important, we acknowledge that though we have a medical cannabis program, it's really not working for a lot of people. And so there's a deep desire to improve that program. And again, Minnesotans are really invested in helping veterans. They want to make sure that these veterans with PTSD and other conditions are able to access their medication through the VA without risking losing other benefits or other consequences. So some of the messaging that we use, based on what we heard from Minnesotans and based on the research that we've done, is that Minnesota's cannabis laws are currently doing more harm than good. We support legalizing adult-use cannabis in Minnesota. Using the term "adult use" is really important to us because a lot of people don't use this just for recreation, as the term recreational implies. People actually use this because it de-stresses them or it makes them feel like a better person. And this is an adult decision that we're making. This will be a 21-plus market, and so we're very focused on this being an adult personal use industry, whether it's for fun recreationally or for therapeutic purposes, is up to the adult. We want to legalize, expunge, and regulate, and we also want to help address those racial inequities. So this QR code that's here, if you'd like to read the full bill summary, you can scan this, and it will bring you to that page. It'll also be in the corner of the next several slides if you miss it now. So as we talk about the bill and how it's designed, I'm just going to go over kind of the big chunks. This is one of the biggest bills I've ever worked on. It's about this thick, I have a copy of it not too far away, but a very thick and complex bill. So I'll try to break it down as much as I can here. So the regulating body over the cannabis market will establish a cannabis management board, the regulating body itself, and the advisory councils. There will be staggered terms of folks with diverse experiences. They'll be responsible for conducting reports and studies, managing a statewide monitoring system, approving products, and overseeing the overall licensing market. There's different license types that we will offer. The license types include cultivator, manufacturer, retailer, wholesaler, transporter, testing facilities, micro businesses, event organizers, delivery services, medical business, and maybe even more. Folks have made it very clear that they want to make sure every layer of the cannabis industry is protected for fraud, waste, abuse, and just malfeasance in general. And so other states have, over the years, added more licensing types. And so instead, we'll be coming out the gate, hopefully, with a number of different layers and hoping to make sure we allow for some vertical integration as well. For business development, the bill will establish an application and processing fee that we consider to be very affordable. In some other states, when this is passed, these application fees were upwards of $10,000, which is not accessible for people to start a business. And so we're intentionally keeping that business fee low. It enacts inspections, makes sure that we're looking for violations and penalties, enforces business ownership requirements, like being a Minnesotan or making sure that you have certain, we're in discussions about certain criminal backgrounds, and what does that look like for owning a business? And then also offering some business development grants as well. Local control is always the question I get asked most about in events like these. The local control is really important to us. A lot of states have passed cannabis legalization and left their state, their cities and local governments kind of foundering. And we don't want to do that here. We want to support you and other local governments as much as possible. Within reason, we will allow there to be some reasonable restrictions. But our current bill, as it stands today, outlaws prohibition. We have found in other states that allow cannabis in one city and not in the next, or allow local governments to decide whether or not it will be allowed at all, has actually resulted in what we're calling prohibition light. And so it's still keeping prohibition alive and well and actually keeping some of the darker underground markets very alive and thriving. And so in an effort to make sure that we are bringing this entire industry above board because it's safer that way for everybody, we will, we, we're not in support of having every city ban that. But you can say things like, "I don't, our city won't have it within 100 feet of a school," or something like that, "way up, you know, can't have more than one every 500 feet." There's things like that that can happen. In some cities, they have kind of zoned a part of town to really be responsible for where things can be grown because of smells and other things. And so, of course, we want to work with the cities on those reasonable restrictions, but always happy to answer questions about that. We also want to support local governments in doing studies if they want to and having a complaint process with the Cannabis Management Board. Just a few more slides here. The oversight and accountability piece of it, we want to make sure that there are like safe consumption locations and have some rules around that. We also are making sure that there is accountability for any clinical trials. Also, we're testing packaging and labeling and advertisement requirements. We do not want our products marketed towards children. And that's an extremely important part of what this oversight and accountability piece covers, is making sure that this isn't having, you know, Count Chocula on it or something like that, and having some very clear limits around. We also have equity goals, which we've learned from other states didn't maybe do as well as we think could be done. And so we want to try to do this better and set the stage for other states as well so we can make sure that the folks who have been most disproportionately impacted by prohibition over the years have an opportunity to be involved in the market. So veterans, low-income members, kind of similar to federal opportunity zones. We want to offer community grants. We'll have a Substance Use Disorder Council, and then also working with workers and employer protections. So it's making sure that if you run a company, that you need your employees to not be under the influence of anything, that you have the ability to test and have that option and keep your workplace safe, but also protecting workers who are permitted to have a beer on the weekend, also be permitted to consume outside of work without that affecting their ability to retain or get employment. And so really interesting conversations coming out of that. Always happy to talk about that if you're interested. Next is taxes. That's a big one we get asked about. We're proposing a 10% retail tax, I'm sorry, retail tax, which is a subject, it is subject to sales tax, which would not include a medical cannabis. And it does not, we would also exempt sales tax for the purchase of equipment to help people get the businesses thriving. We do prohibit any local sales tax from that, which is kind of a debatable subject at the moment, but we can always talk about that if you have questions about that specifically. Safety measures, we want to regulate edible cannabis products because we know if kids do get a hold of them, you know, it can be an uncomfortable night. And we are, a lot of people say a cannabis overdose is a good night's sleep, but that still doesn't mean that we don't want to protect people from consuming something stronger that they don't want to or consuming at all if they don't want to. So we do want to have some regulations around edible products. It also establishes criminal penalties for violations within the legal market. Again, this is 21+, you have very strict data privacy included, and education programs. So we have justice measures built into this. We will be talking about doing automatic expungement and vacant dismisses of non-felony charges, which we would be the first in the country to do that. The Expundment Board would review felony charges and resentencing. And it removes the restriction that prohibits eligibility for state programs, and it reschedules cannabis from class one to class three here in Minnesota. That is the majority of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. This next slide just tells you, if you'd like to get involved, how you can get involved. We're always looking for folks to testify at committees. It's always helpful to talk to your friends and neighbors, offer suggestions about the legislation, and to talk about this on social media, and continue the conversation as we go into this next legislative session.
Okay, thank you, Representative Hansen. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Question?
Yes, Councilmember Workman.
Wonderful presentation. I just have a quick question. Somebody close to me was working on obtaining their carry permit and then got a diagnosis of cancer and then tried seeking out, you know, the medical cannabis option, but was told that if you obtain that card, it kind of, not kind of, it negates your ability to get a legal carry permit. And I don't know all the details on that, if that's a federal law or a state law, but is that something that you've been working on? Because I feel like that kind of hits those equity goals with a lot of veterans having carry permits. So if there's any additional information on that, I'd love to hear it.
Well, the great thing about a full legalization market means that there's no cards to get. And that's really the best part about this, right? Is for folks who are being limited by those rules right now, a full legalization market would allow them access to a dispensary and would allow them access. Now, if they wanted to get the medical card, that would be, have to be something we change in the medical program, which that's part of the improvements of the medical program, but also not like the biggest goal that I particularly work on. But I think full legalization is the better solution because I've heard that story so many times. You've heard it mentioned on the House floor from existing representatives who want to partake in the medical program and are eligible to, but don't want to give up their gun rights. And that's, that's their right to do so. And I don't think that we should be forcing folks to do one way or the other. I think that this is against, you know, liberty and personal freedom. But a full legalization market, you know, wouldn't be, wouldn't be looking for that every, for example, you wouldn't go to the dispensary and have to say, "I have a concealed carry," or "I have a gun permit." Like, that just doesn't happen in the legal market.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Schultz?
So you had noted that currently veterans cannot get medical marijuana through the VA. And I realize that this is mostly a bill about adult use, but you were also talking about medical marijuana reform in Minnesota as well. Will there be federal interference with the VA regarding medical marijuana, even if we were to reform it at the state level?
I think it's important for us to reform it so that more veterans have the support of states as they address that at the federal level. I'm not a veteran nor a VA expert, so I don't want to come across as one. But I do know that I've heard so many stories, and there's an entire organization called the Minnesota Veterans for Cannabis, I believe is their name. And they have been working really diligently on this. So I can certainly touch base with them and follow up with you about what they're doing kind of to advocate on the federal level. But in our case, we really just want to throw our support behind the veterans here and make sure that if they are able to find that there, or if the VA federally does say, "Go ahead and let your states decide," that we are there to have those veterans back.
Can you tell us where the federal legislation is on legalizing marijuana?
Oh, well, it depends on the weather sometimes. So we have a support of a lot of people, bipartisan support on a federal level, to do a lot of things, to allow for states' federal banking laws to change around this, to allow for consumable amounts of CBD or Delta-8 to be defined. It really depends on the wind. And unfortunately, I do not see the federal government coming around anytime soon to help Minnesotans on this, which is why I think it's so important that we continue to move forward with our full legalization bill and our efforts to stand with Minnesotans while the feds figure it out because, as we all know, the federal government doesn't necessarily do things quick. And this has been a conversation happening for a long time. But there are some things that the feds do have to help us with. Like I said, the banking regulations and some of the other FDA things have to come through. But they are really deferring to states' rights in the majority of it, including in like DEA prosecution. There, you know, there was a point in time where a few states passed legalization, but the DEA was still coming in to seize products. And so there's been a lot of conversations around that where the federal government is, I think, better respecting states' rights. where the federal government is, I think, better respecting states' rights in that sense. Um, but there's a long way to go before I think there is a pro cannabis majority in the federal government.
Any other questions? Representative Hanson, thank you so much for coming and educating us on this uh, topic. Uh, and it's something that is going to continue to have all of your attention uh, at the legislature. And then um, it will continue to move forward. So thank you so much for educating us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the review of the draft Housing Improvement Assistance Program. And presenting this evening is our Community Development Director Jenny Faulkner, Chris Forsland, our-
Madam Mayor, if you please check your script for the order of the meeting.
Did you change?
Yep.
We have guests coming for this presentation on water quality.
Oh, so we'll be doing, do that water first. Okay.
Thank you for your understanding.
Alrighty then. Okay, so the next item then, because I'm going from the agenda that I have.
Yeah, same here. I didn't know.
Yeah. Okay, so the next item is the Future Quarry Lake Water Level and the Groundwater Rising Impact Study. And um, that is going to be headed off and um, um, our Public Works Director Ryan Peterson. And um, we have Mr. Bo Johnston uh, from Blackened Beach, uh, our consulting. And I'm going to have um, our Public Works Director lead up and then he can make all of the appropriate introductions.
Sounds good.
Stage is yours, Ryan.
All right. Thank you very much for allowing us to uh, go second tier tonight as we got a, a guest with us. So um, we are talking about the Corey Reservoir Study and we got Tony White, our su- our utility superintendent in, in uh, attendance tonight. And then we got Bo Johnston, uh, the engineering manager with Black and Beach and our project manager on this one. And then we might have Brian LeMond online. Um, there he is, yes.
We can see him. He is on Zoom.
And he's a sub consultant on this one. And uh, his firm Bar Engineering has done a lot of the modeling that goes into uh, the work that we'll be discussing. So uh, background, uh, may even know this, but for people at home, uh, this is north of um, thirteen and west of thirty-five W. And they've been mining, Kramer Mining Materials has been mining quarries, um, mining limestone out of the quarry since approximately nineteen fifty-nine, so more than fifty years. And then uh, since two thousand nine, we completed that collaborative project with the state of Minnesota, City of Savage and Kramer Quarry to uh, mine water out of there instead of pumping it to the river. Uh, that's not the focus of them, um, the discussion tonight, but is part of the overall um, con- considerations that were there. This next bullet is probably the most important bullet that we have. Um, they will be mining in, into the future, likely twenty to forty more years with the expansion that was got there. So um, what I really need to stress is there is some information here that it will be, I don't know if alarming is too strong of a word, but it, it's, it's going to be some significant changes outside of the quarry that you'll get to hear about tonight. But please remember that this, none of this is going to be occurring in the twenty twenties and the twenty thirties. We're here tonight to tell you what we're learning about so we can plan. So for the twenty forties and fifties, we're ready to go. So that's, that's the um, that'd be the takeaway I'd take right away. And then if possible, on this one, if we could go through all the slides before asking questions, because there's a lot of different things that answers itself. And then we can get, we'll be going back and forth a lot. So if we could just go through the presentation tonight and then save your questions and then we'll answer all of them at that time, if at all possible.
It is possible and I can manage that for you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, uh, woman, Bo Johnston, um, with Black and Beach.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Ryan, and uh, thank you for allowing us to come in and uh, talk to you tonight. So um, we've been working on uh, this study uh, with the city, uh, I guess uh, Black and Beach and Bar Engineering since about uh, two thousand and sixteen. And really, uh, kind of conceptually, we've known that the quarry, at some point, they're going to be done mining. And it's going to be going back to a lake. And I think conceptually, that's kind of um, been on everyone's mind, but really um, not really understanding what are the implications of that. So the study is really meant to have us uh, closer evaluate, what are those potentials and what, what do we need to be doing now to be planning for that, that future? Uh, as Ryan said, this is probably not affecting the twenty forty comp plan or like a twenty fifty comp plan, but how do those items and how do those questions kind of shape themselves for what we learn? Uh, a lot of these results are kind of hot off the press. Uh, we, we pushed out a tech memo on specifically on what kind of happens around the quarry when it becomes a lake. Uh, previous to this, we've looked at other, um, other things of like, uh, how do, uh, how does the bottom of the lake, what does that bottom mining elevation need to go to? How does the water quality affect, what does our intake need to look like for our surface water plant? But specifically today, we're going to be talking about the, the lake and what the surrounding area um, entails. Uh, some of the questions are coming up that we're hoping to answer up on the screen. Um, once we actually stop mining and we start filling that lake up, you know, we want to know how long is that going to take to fill up? Uh, what is the final elevation of uh, the lake? And that's a really big one because that affects groundwater in the area. Um, probably more importantly is who actually gets to decide that elevation? Because there's implications for having a higher elevation or a lower elevation, but who decides that? Um, and then once we have that elevation, uh, what are the implications around there? Um, of course, uh, you know, Tony and his staff are concerned about what are the water quality implications going to be in the future? And then all that kind of gets rolled together of what are the public and uh, stakeholder inputs that we're going to receive? So uh, right now, you guys are, are, are first on our list. Uh, this is kind of, like I said, hot off the presses. And uh, we're, we're letting you guys know first and hoping to get some direction from you on, on other stakeholders that we need to uh, involve as well. So let's talk a little bit about like, what's the current situation um, down at the, the quarry? This will kind of set it, uh, set up some of our future discussions. Uh, this is actually a graphic that Ryan came up with that uh, does a good job of illustrating what uh, what is going on down at the lake. So you can see the quarry, right now we've got a, uh, you know, a, a quarry just kind of uh, dug down into the ground and we have little reservoirs at the bottom. And, and the reservoirs are kind of acting like a, like a spring. It's a place for that groundwater to go to. Um, right now, there's, there's two different reservoirs down there. One reservoir is our surface water uh, uh, treatment reservoir. So the water's coming in, we're pumping that up to the surface water treatment plant, um, treating that water. Um, kind of isolated on the north side of the quarry is a, another um, reservoir. The, they call that the, the, the north sump or the zero bench sump. And uh, additional waters going there, Kramer is pumping that out to the river as part of their appropriations permit. Um, but really what I want you to take away from this picture is that uh, we have a water elevation at the bottom and the groundwater in that area is going to kind of slope down and kind of slowly come to that, that point. So if you have low water, then the groundwater kind of feeds in on, on that, on that area. Um, what that means is we've got, uh, we got certain things that we're kind of concerned about around there. We've got the landfills, but right now we got the water underneath the landfills, kind of important to know there. Uh, the foundations for those buildings down there, water is well below the water, the surface. Uh, we've got those yellow arrows there that are, uh, those are city utility pipes. So like your sanitary sewer, your storm sewers, your water pipes, uh, those are all installed in, in uh, soils that don't really have any water. And then of course, over on the right hand side there, we've got our municipal wells that have a long enough uh, uh, well boring going down to be able to get that water and pull it up. And that water is actually going to the groundwater plant, which is separate from the, the surface water uh, facility. So kind of looking forward, uh, Kramer's got a uh, plan, a PUD, Plan Unit Development Permit. And what that entails is they're gonna, they have a final elevation that, that they can mine down to. And you can actually see those red, uh, those red contours there. Uh, what that looks like is you kind of have a, uh, from the side, it kind of slopes down. It's got a little uh, depression in the middle, but the, the numbers you, you want to take a look on there, that's five seventy-eight in the middle. We got uh, five ninety-four, so it's kind of a cone based depression as it goes down in. Um, a couple of points of um, kind of reference. Uh, the area that's up above, as you kind of drive on those roads up above on there, that's sitting right around, right around seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and thirty, somewhere in that area. Um, the current bottom elevation ranges somewhere in that six oh five to six twenty range. So if you're standing on top, right now they've got a hundred foot drop down to the bottom or maybe a little bit more. As we talk about going into the future, that twenty to forty years in the future, they're taking out another forty feet and going down even lower. So just to note, like, it's going to kind of look like a large hole going down into, into the bottom. So uh, if we fast forward and we have, uh, we take a look at the modeling conditions, when, when Kramer's finally done modeling, the bottom of that look is already done. They've pulled all their equipment out, they've cleaned up what they need to clean up on the outside. We're kind of uh, looking at that and saying that's time zero, right? At that point, they're going to stop pumping and that basin is going to have that water go into it and it's going to start filling up uh, to a lake. So what we're, what we're doing is we're saying, okay, at the very instant that they stop pumping, we're going to call that time zero, what does that look like? And we're able to, um, actually, BAR is able to, to go through and they have hydrogeologists on staff to look at what kind of soils are around there? What does the rock look like? How does that water um, flow? You know, from further south to the north towards the river, because it's all going that way. And we're able to estimate out what those, what that groundwater elevation is. And that's really what those blue lines are. And what I kind of want you to take away from this photo here is that we've got um, kind of water from further out, it's basically going down to the bottom of that quarry. That's really what this is saying. Um, another way to look at this and maybe a little bit more graphically is uh, we developed a map here that's uh, we're using as a heat map. So what this is doing is it's taking the, the surface elevation and that model, the ground elevation is just taking the difference between the two. So if you look up at the, the screen, if it's a gray value, um, you know, kind of up in that, that area, really that water surface elevation is, is well below, thirty feet below the surface. Um, green is between twenty and thirty, uh, it gets to be yellow, it's eleven to twenty. And really, if it's red, those are areas of concern because that water elevation is about, is within ten feet of the, of the surface. Now, not really, it may or may not be an issue, um, but just something graphically for us to take a look at as we look at how these things are going to change. So um, now we're going to fast forward and we're going to set a water elevation in that lake. So we had the initial uh, start of it when they just finished mining. Now we've got a, sometime in the future, it is filled up to a, a value. And, and for our study, we decided to do initial evaluation at six hundred and ninety. Um, that, that value really isn't quite arbitrary, but it is a number that really hasn't been set. We needed someplace to start. Uh, it's a number that's been thrown out by Kramer because it allows for um, water to flow out of the quarry into the river, uh, unless there's a flood, of course. But uh, it's just really a starting point to see where we're, where we're at. So uh, first question we had is, well, how long is that going to fill to make that lake get all the way filled up? And so we're estimating that's going to be up to six years from the time they shut that off to um, to be able to fill all the way up. So you know, Ryan's talking, you know, where this is going to be happening decades in the future. We got to add another six years on that to actually fill up that, that basin. Um, but then uh, that kind of leads us to the next question is, well, what is that lake elevation going to be? Um, we'll take a look at some of the uh, um, uh, impacts at six ninety. That elevation really needs to be discussed with a lot of different people. And we'll, 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 we'll circle back on, on that as well. So if we take a look at these things side by side, um, we can kind of get an understanding of what are those, what's going to be happening in that area? Uh, so on the left is our empty quarry, that's at time zero. Six years later is on the right, we've filled it all the way up to six ninety. Um, one thing to note is we also have a scenario where there's a flood condition in the river, but we're not really considering that right now. We're really looking at just six ninety and where we're at. Um, so you can see a difference in those contours on, on the, the, I think it's left on your guys' as well, but on the left side, that empty quarry, um, you know, as an example, that little green box, that's kind of the Menards area down there with um, you know, some of those uh, commercial buildings, uh, ground elevation at seven twenty-eight. Um, when we're done mining, the groundwater is at six ninety. And then over six years, that groundwater is actually raising up and now it's up at seven, seven twenty. The further you, the closer you get to that uh, quarry, the larger that that increase actually is. If we're out far, it might not have as much of an impact on it. But you know, something to, to note that basically with the lake going up, we have groundwater rebounding in those, in those areas. Uh, so what is the, what does that heat map look like now? And uh, you know, kind of ignoring the actual lake itself, because that is obviously going to be filled up with, with water. Um, we have uh, more areas of, of town that we want to take a closer look at. Um, not saying that there will be problems, that are, these are all potential um, locations and places that we need to be taking multiple steps going forward uh, to, to kind of see what those, what those uh, uh, potential impacts are. But you can see that the amount of red in, in these areas definitely increases from one to the other. So um, again, future studies, what are those impacts? Um, you know, we needed, we need to take a closer look. Uh, taking a look at what exactly those impacts could be. So we're going to return back to this graphic. Uh, this is kind of the after graphic after uh, we've filled up that quarry. Um, and we start stepping through these, the, these different areas, right? So we really have, uh, the implications are determined on what elevation that, that uh, lake is going to be set at. But we've like, got kind of got five main concerns uh, through this. So the first one is the, the groundwater into the landfills. So as that water level goes up, you know, that water level has the potential to go into any kind of trash in the, the landfills. So we'll touch base on that a little bit more in a, in a bit. Um, city utilities, uh, really were, were concerned about this because if you have like a sanitary sewer or storm sewer and there's a cracked pipe and seal isn't there and now that pipe is inundated with water around it, now you've got water that could be flowing into that pipe and uh, whatever downstream utility is going to have to deal with that, that water. Uh, not only on, not only that, but on top of, I'm not sure what happened there, but uh, on top of that, um, uh, you know, Tony and his staff, uh, as they go into repair pipes, if you have a pipe that's uh, with groundwater there, uh, those repairs become a lot more difficult, uh, especially in winter, when you're trying to de-water the, the pit to make a repair on the pipe. So um, uh, again, a future condition that we want to take a look at to see what those potential implications are. Um, structure foundations are obviously a concern. Uh, you know, if you have a uh, structure with a slab on grade or maybe a frost footing, maybe not that big of a concern, but if you have a structure with a potential basement or something along those lines, again, uh, a concern for rising groundwater. Now, we really don't know the um, know the implications of that. That's the next uh, next steps in the study is to actually figure out what's down there, what implications we may have. But again, a concern that we wanted to kind of bring up. Um, and then finally, uh, or I guess the fourth item was actually drinking water quality. You know, now that we have a lake and we have a, an impact to go to that surface water plant, what kind of, uh, what kind of water quality could, could uh, impacts could that have on that, that lake? Uh, we'll talk about that in a second. But really where it comes down to is all of these things kind of balled together really goes into what is the future land development look like down there? Um, you know, if you have a concern about foundations, that might limit uh, limit what kind of building you put down there, which limits what your land development, which is really the whole reason why we're here today, is to kind of bring these, these issues up. So you know, you as a city council can start thinking about, you know, what does that look like twenty, thirty, forty years down the, down the way? Um, one thing I do want to take a, just a quick detour on is talk about that groundwater and surface water impacts. Um, as that water goes up, uh, you know, we do have the potential for that water to enter into that landfill. And um, we, we do know that those landfills were installed when that water level was artificially low. Um, the question we have, we don't have the answer, but the question is, will the water raise up into that stored trash? And if so, is that stored trash in a lined landfill? Meaning there's a liner on the bottom and a liner on the top and you kind of have the trash sandwiched in between? Or is it an un, an unlined um, uh, part of the, the landfill? Um, and if so, uh, what, what is in the landfill that we should be concerned about? So there's a whole suite of things that we can, we can treat for, whole suite of things that become more problematic to treat for. So really, what is that concern? And we want to, in, in the future studies, look at what are those, uh, what are those concerns and, and report back on how do we, how do we handle those? Um, one thing I do want to make- One thing I do want to make really clear is that this is a future concern, not a current concern. Currently, we've done a lot of studies on where the water is coming from, from that south quarry. You can actually see the capture zone right now going into our our reservoir there. Tested frequently, right now, no issues with the water quality as that flow comes from the south. So I want to make sure that that is, that is clear. This is a future issue, not a current issue. But as we go forward in the in the future, there is a concern. And right now, if we look at how does that water flow into that lake in the future? We can say with a degree of certainty that about ninety-five percent of that water is gonna be coming from the south. And is not gonna be affected by any kind of flow through a landfill. And that flow through the landfill is really what we're concerned about. We do have some float, those are those lines you can kind of see coming through, those are flow pathways. And showing how they're coming into that quarry. We do have flow that is going underneath, underneath those those landfills in the future. So, you know, what does this mean? First thing it means is we need additional study to figure out what what's there. The second thing, it really does support the cleanup of the freeway landfill and the freeway dump. I know that the city has talked about that before. So that's a continued, continuism items. And then I know with the Burnsville landfill, their SCIS did say there may be future mitigation measures. We want to make sure that they're aware of this. So we can, we can bring those mitigation measures to the forefront and make sure that that's not getting, you know, kind of pushed to the side and making sure that, you know, that water quality is is there. And that's not just water quality for drinking, that's also water quality for this as a recreational lake in the future as well. So what is, what are our next steps? Like I, like I said, you know, these results are kind of hot off the press. Our, our intention is to go out and get agency and public communication input. As I mentioned, you guys are kind of our first stop on that, that whole, that whole endeavor. So we will be taking that tech memo, sending it out to the different regulatory agencies. The different stakeholders in the area, trying to get input. Also, as part of our studies, we're also looking at the public and private infrastructure, those structures. Well, I should say right now, the utilities right now, the G I S system that the city has is really well defined. So I think that we're gonna have, be able to have results back to say, what are the implications on the utilities? So that's a, that's a good thing to be able to understand what those impacts are. The structures down there is a little bit less defined, so I think that that's gonna take some additional study. We're working with Ryan and his, and his group to try to help figure out a plan for, you know, getting information on foundations, getting informations on buildings, getting information on that. And then comparing to that with what those potential water elevations are to be able to understand what those impacts are. So both of those items are kind of in the future. Probably the, the, you know, nine hundred pound grill in the room really is the lake elevation. And as you can imagine, you know, a lake elevation for someone who wants a, you know, a nice lake that people can get in in and out of is a different elevation than someone who may not want water going into their landfills. So there's gonna be lots of discussion, I'm, we're anticipating on what that elevation is. We're hoping to get kind of a, a group effort on setting that elevation. So then we have a future modeling condition that will show us where we're at and help us in our planning. And then really that elevation, you know, allows us to go forward and really determine the next state, the next study phase. So I guess with that, you know, we'll open it up for questions and kind of start that communication process on getting feedback.
Councilmember Keely.
Thank you. This was the most comprehensive presentation on the water, the water levels. The quarry, the the unlined and lined landfill and all of the. I had no idea that we had water level that once it rises to fill that lake would actually submerge potentially our sewer pipes, water, you know, that the type of utilities that you take for granted that they're just underground, not that far and water is significantly below that, so it's never a threat. Right? But down there, the water level is very high. I mean, it's ironic, but I couldn't help but think of New Orleans and dealing with water levels that are so close to the surface that many things are above the surfaces. And and even they have to take more severe measures than we do, of course, but interesting, I I, that is, I'm gonna watch this on a replay to absorb it all again. Because there is a wealth of information in there that is important to us and in our future decisions. Thank you.
Yeah, and we do have the tech memo and one of the things that you were talking about is, you know, kind of, you know, bringing that back to a you know, back to a, you know, a higher water level. I mean, we know with the fens down in the area, historically, hundreds of years ago, you know, this, the the groundwater in this area looked a lot different. And really, the mining of this has kind of artificially made it better. So as it returns to that state, you know, we need to prepare for that and
Is it a quick follow? Yeah, I wonder if it's, is it feasible that as we approach that thirty plus years out? Question, because it sounds like the quarry has got about a thirty year timeline, assuming things don't change up or down in in aggregate demand, but could the city be faced with pumping to to bring the level down a little bit instead of letting it, letting it go to its natural state, natural level? Doing some pumping to just keep it down, let's say, an extra ten feet? Just to keep it away from all the other things, let alone the landfill, the online landfill, that's a whole separates discussion, but and that, that would of course drop the level in the lake, correct?
Correct.
So, so Olympic cliff diving could be hosted in Burnsville into our brand new lake forty years from now.
Very, very well, very well could, you know, they, yeah, you could have people, you know, getting paid to do triple flips off the, off the side, right?
It's not a laughing matter, but it is something that never thought about. I, you know, I didn't realize that when that water level comes up, there's other properties around there according to your map that all become, you know, with the threat of, right, if they have any kind of underground mechanicals or maybe they don't have basements in that area or whatever, but it becomes a certainly a threat, a flooding, it's almost like in the flood zone now, where it may, may have always been, but it's very dry. It's gonna return to becoming much more of a flood zone.
Yeah, yeah, like in, yeah, and that's, that's, that's exactly, you know, the way to, the way to look at it is like, you know, now you've got groundwater around it. So, you know, if you have a new facility going in, you know, you may have to put a limit on and say, hey, I'm sorry, you can't put a basement down here or or else, you know, in the future, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue. I will have to, I do want to point out when we talk a little bit about the water levels, you know, you brought up the point of pumping. And, you know, that's kind of the next step mitigation, right, as we, as we go through. And it brings up a whole suite of other questions that if you, if you decide, hey, you know what, six ninety is too high, we don't want to take the risks. Well, maybe that's six eighty, maybe that's six seventy, you do things around that quarry to to kind of fix that. Well, who pays for the pumps? Who pays for the pumping over the course of the, the, the rest of the life of that, that, that project or that, that structure? That some city takes, takes on, is that someone's private entity takes on? A lot of, there's, there's more questions that come out of those, those elevations. Either way, either way, so.
Yeah, Vince.
Thank you. Very good presentation. I'm curious about freeway. Obviously, we would like to see the dig, dig and haul option at that site. But let's just assume that doesn't happen. And we go with dig and line. Are there any other situations that you're aware of where you've got trash on top of a liner that's on top of water? And do we have any idea what kind of impact that much water pressure would have on a liner?
Great question. I might, I might defer to to Brian on that one. Brian, did you hear the question?
I did, yes. The water level is it's gonna rise up under the liners. If the liners haven't been properly designed for it, it could cause quite a bit of problem. But if they have been designed for it, there are ways for that water pressure to be mitigated and the liner to survive the raising pressure. So obviously, the question is how high would it rise under the liner? And how much pressure would be placed under the, on, onto the, the trash? But if the designers know about that in advance, they will be able to ballast the liner, you know, weight down the liner so that it won't float up during rising water levels, which is one of the bigger problems you see when water levels rise up under liners is they'll actually float, an air bubble will get caught in them and they'll float. So there's ways to address that and and designs can be taken that will mitigate that. And obviously, if they end up doing that type of a mitigation for freeway landfill, they would be likely thinking about that one because they know water levels will be coming up there in the future.
Does, does that take into account, you know, the hundred year flood, the, you know, the, the one in them? And I, I don't expect you to have an answer, but
Well, I'm sorry.
Or maybe you might, but.
Yeah, no, we actually did do some modeling to see what the hundred year flood would look like, how much the water level would rise up. And what kind of water levels they would expect to see then under a liner if it were to be placed there. We, we're looking at it more specifically to the impacts of that level on the lake. And as a result, when you look at, you know, the the floods on the Minnesota River, they don't show up and go away in a day, they last for a long time, right? So even if you're gonna try to maintain a lake level in the six ninety area, you're probably gonna end up having some kind of a pump station because of how long the rising and falling limb of those floods are. And that would keep that water level above the, that area where the lake could flow out by gravity. And so you're likely gonna have a pump station, even if you pick six ninety as your final elevation. But again, those, the models did show what the groundwater elevations would look like underneath both Burnsville and freeway landfill and freeway dump, so that that can be taken into account or during design.
Yeah, and actually to add on to that a little bit, you know, we do know that whatever elevation we have here, there are gonna be infrastructure improvements down there, flood walls to to be able to keep that out, some sort of pumping. Even, you know, to to try to, you know, take care of those flood conditions. And, you know, kind of talking a little bit about those landfills. We do have other mitigation techniques, like we can, you know, put in a, a grout wall. You know, basically dig a long wall all the way down to kind of try to separate that to keep the flow going through into the, into the lake. We have, you know, interceptor pipes or interceptor well systems that we can be doing. So again, future, future solutions to future questions. But, you know, really where we're at right now is just trying to figure out what are those potential impacts, so.
Maybe just ask a one more follow up question. Has any of this been discussed with the M P C A as they're building their dig and line plan? Is that part of their funding?
Yeah, Brian.
Analysis that they've done?
Actually, Ryan might know more about that than I do. So as bar engineering is working on both sides of this a little bit, we're working on some of the M P C A stuff. So we're, we're talking to each other and we're aware of what's going on here. How much direct communication has been happening? I've not been sitting in those meetings, so I don't know for sure, but certainly they know that these plans are occurring and they're taking them into account for their designs.
As far as what the modeling results we're seeing right now, basically, it's just been the, the, the city and Kramer has, has been reviewing that. Because we've been coordinating, coordinating with them, but, you know, we're, we're, the plan is to go out, so.
If it's still the most cost effective plan when you consider these additional.
I'm very confident that M P C A has similar information, maybe not quite as detailed, but they know it's by the river. They know it could flood. They do know the Kramer will not be pumping forever.
They've driven by there a few times.
They've driven by there a few times.
Thank you.
Well, in, so that, that was the question I was gonna ask is, I mean, we can assume that they know that. But that's generally a bad idea to assume. So is there a way that we can make sure that that information gets to them? Because the other thing is, if, like, if there needs to be a pump station there, if there's dig in line, then, then that's what, that's our ongoing cost. Like, that's what they're gonna leave us with and they're like, good luck, man. Great, have fun with that. I, yeah, I'm.
So we have been
That's crappy.
So we, we definitely have been in conversations with the P C A. They've had group meetings. Kramer has been in conversation with them on different things. So that I'm one hundred percent sure they are aware of the potential or that the condition will be changing in the future. They may not have this much detail and we will be happy to supply, as, as I said, our next step is to do community outreach. So we will be working on that and and we have to reach out to the D N R and the Department of Health along with the P C A. So there's, that that will be occurring. I'm confident.
Thinking back to the M R Q plan, the vision plan for the Minnesota River Quadrant. There was mixed use in there. I'm assuming that given this water table that underground parking might not be a good idea now for those mixed use buildings. In the flood.
We'll be identifying mitigation things and, you know, it's, it's hard to know. It's, we talked about pumping, it's maybe in the future, we're not pumping out of the surface water intake. Maybe we're pumping south of there and for our own water, we're taking in, in those two things. It gives us our water supply along with dropping the water level. That could be a potential mitigation that would, that's some, the types of things we'll be looking at, hopefully win wins.
But ultimately, if we do take the level down, it brings the level of water around that new manmade lake down below the surface where they've mined up and there's obviously rocky bluffs all the way around. Is that, is that?
I don't know if that's fair to say or not.
You know, drop the water down where the, the planned beach, you know, where they've taken the elevation and into the water. That might still work out, but other areas, it could affect how the lake can be used recreationally, I guess.
That would definitely be part of what we're discussing and going into the future. I don't know, Brian probably can't answer the question, being with the modeling firm.
The, was the question related to where there would be beach and where there would be cliff? Is that kind of the way?
Let's say we're gonna pump from the groundwater.
Far away.
Is it going to allow the lake to be at six ninety? Could we pump for, for drinking water and still have the lake up at six ninety kind of deal?
We, we looked at, we looked at options like that quite a while back when we were looking at things with the quarry. My gosh, maybe even twenty years ago. And the, the challenge becomes you have to remove a lot more water from the ground to get that water level, you know, to, to protect the things you want to protect. And then whether or not you could leave the lake at six ninety, I think that would be I, that, that would be a challenge. I think you'd see a fairly significant number of wells ringing the quarry and pumping at a very specific rate to try to accomplish that. That would be, I think, challenging.
You, you're no longer in a situation where, you know, you're just only affecting the drawdown of the, of the, of the groundwater. Now you have a surface water, almost like a component to it, you have to take a look at it, but.
Yeah, if, if that water was gonna end up being used for drinking water, you'd still have to treat it as surface water because of the influence, direct influence of surface water.
So I have two questions. First question has to do with the aquifer. And we're going to be getting a lot of that groundwater coming up to fill up that lake. And because we wanna sustain its level at about six ninety or below. And we're gonna be pumping out all that water out into the river. And I'm sure that you're talking to the Department of Natural Resources. But what does that do to the aquifer when we're trying to continue to recharge that precious resource? And then when I look at your heat map that you had out there and the red was supposed to be where the water is all around. And it has direct impact onto the Burnsville landfill. So what does that do? Because there are some areas within that landfill that's not lined. And we all know that. So what does that do to all of that? And I know that that's some of the issues that you're going to have to contend with. So I'm gonna first go back and say, talk to us about the aquifer. Because one of the things that we've been trying to do all along is protect that aquifer and protect the water sources, not only for us today, but for future generations.
Yeah, and I think it, it's a little bit hard to, and I'm gonna defer to, to Brian here in a second. But as of right now, we have the, the Jordan aquifers where all your wells are, are down below. We've actually got a cap on top of that. And then we have our quarry that's on top of that. So if you can imagine, you know, the aquifer that extends all further back to the south where all of our wells are going down into, that's kind of protected from that quarry by, by, by a cap on, on top of it. Now, certainly, if you don't Um, now certainly if you don't have any um, water on top of it, it becomes much easier for that upwelling to kind of, kind of happen. Uh, more water on top. I don't know, Brian, what are your thoughts if one that, once that's a lake with the pressure on top of that, that quarry? And how we, and how we, we manage that?
Well, when, when you think about the Minnesota River and the aquifers in the region, the Minnesota River is like, is a regional discharge point for all of the aquifers. They're all upwelling. And essentially that's their drain, that's their outlet. So the aquifers even today are largely responsible for the flow in the Minnesota River, other than obviously rain and whatnot. But the, the um, the whole area down by the bluffs, it used to be springs and rivers flowing into the Minnesota River and then down, all the way down to Gulf of Mexico. So when this uh, quarry stops pumping, the upwelling of the groundwater is still going to be flowing towards the river. And in fact, instead of being captured by the quarry pumps, it will be discharging naturally by gravity in most situations into the river, just like it used to for a long time. So from a water quality standpoint, the aquifers are going to be essentially they're not going to be any worse. They're going to be in some regards better because that discharge into the Minnesota River would be um, not going back into the aquifer. In other words, if there's contamination that were to somehow make it into that lake, it's not going to soak out into the aquifer. It's just going to flow down into the river like it um, like it used to. So hopefully, hopefully that makes sense and addresses your question.
Well, thank you so much because one of the things is that I'm glad that you're working in collaboration with the businesses down in that area. KMM and also uh, the Burnsville landfill and uh, with the lake, uh, with, with the MPCA and uh, the freeway landfill and dump. Because all of these are things that have a direct impact on everything, but uh, yeah. We've got some issues that we have to take very seriously and with intention as we continue to move down, knowing that um, this is this is why I like having plans so that we can address all of these things. And then the cost factor, what, and then who's going to pay for it? You can't just put it all on the, on the backs of the citizens of Burnsville and their businesses. So that's another big factor that as I look at all of this, we need to find how that's going to be funded. And, and not just funded to put it in, but how we going to sustain it throughout. So those are, for me, my challenge to staff is that as we continue to go down this road, we need to understand how that funding mechanism is going to be. Who's paying for it? And especially when we hear about our utilities are going to be underwater and how, how are you going to deal with that?
Yeah, a- as we move forward in the, in the process, um, you know, as we come out with what those potential impacts are on the utilities, what the potential impacts are on, on those structures down there, we'll be sure to, to make uh, get those information to you. So you guys are updated and, and if you have any additional comments, um, on, you know, stakeholders or, or, or folks, please pass those along to Ryan or like we said, our next step is to go out and get, uh, get the impact. So we want to make sure that we have everybody that we're
Yeah.
supposed to be talking to, having that.
I'm sure that as we continue to go down this road and you're looking at twenty thirty, you're going to be talking to developers because of um, the whole issue of can you have no basements, no garages, underground garages, all of those things that you're going to have to make sure that you talk to uh, developers. Well Jenny, I'm not going to be around you. Be around, I was like Jenny.
I'm going to live forever, Madam Mayor.
You know, you're going to have to take a look at all of that stuff that's going to be coming down the pike for us. It's and I just want to make sure that the people of Burnsville really understand what's happening. And that we're going to be looking out for them with regard to all of this, the groundwater, when people in um, Arizona, Las Vegas, California, all of them trying to get water and we have water, we're going to try and preserve that resource. All right. Thank you so much and thank you for a really great report. Thank you. Okay. Are we back on track on what we need to do here? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the draft housing improvement assistance program. And our community development director Jenny Folsner.
Yeah.
Uh, along with Chris Forsland and Code Enforcement Coordinator and Sarah Maddenow Planner. So Jenny, I'm going to go to you to uh, tee it up and introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the councils. Uh, we're pretty excited to be here tonight to uh, have some new initiatives, I think that we talked about in twenty nineteen as part of the budget process before COVID. So um, as you know, the, the council and Economic Development Commission, if you can go to the first slide, thank you. Adapt, we adapted our first economic development strategic plan in twenty eighteen and um, that was the first one we've ever done and I think it's been great for all of us and we know the path that we're going on. Um, that plan has five goals in it and one of them is to enhance and build awareness around our existing housing and commercial programs and develop new programs as appropriate. So this is falling under that goal and it, we, um, we brought to you earlier in twenty twenty one a housing plan that was kind of a detailed strategy about this. And there were four objectives in that and the first one was to create direct lending programs for housing maintenance and improvement. So again, um, this is falling under our larger goals. So in twenty nineteen, uh, what, when I mentioned the previous discussions that we had about this, I think we were talking about CDVG and um, what we were seeing in the community. So we did budget some modest funds in twenty twenty. We did not spend those because of COVID and and uncertainty with our budget. And we budgeted the same amount in twenty twenty one and again, COVID, not quite sure it was happening, so we have not spent those funds. We certainly can carry those over. So we do have some resources to get something started. We brought these three concept plans to the EDC at their November meeting. They're very excited about this because this is coming off of their work and and how they want to see the community move forward, um, same as you do. So uh, we got feedback from them and uh, made some changes to our plan. And then our goal tonight is to get feedback from you. And if you're, the policy questions are going to be, are you supportive of these three programs? If you need additional information, certainly let us know. And if you are supportive, we plan to bring this back um, at a future council meeting for adoption and then implementation in twenty twenty two. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Forsland, our um, licensing and property maintenance coordinator, and he can talk about uh, unique program. I think this is very unique for us and I will add, you know, most of our housing programs um, in Dakota County have been administered by the Dakota County CDA. So this is kind of forward-thinking, innovative. I don't think any of our surrounding cities kind of have their own housing programs and certainly not, nothing like the program that Chris Forsen is going to talk about.
Good evening.
Good evening, American culture, I'm like Jenny too. I'm excited about it because it's, it's fun to bring a new program forward uh, into the community, especially one that we had talked about for years. And uh, hopefully we'll see it come to fruition here a little bit. Uh, so a little bit about the code cash program itself, it's, it's pretty much exactly what, what the name would sound like. It's an initiative that provides small grants to homeowners who help resolve some of the property maintenance code violations that we see from day to day. There's three things that need to be present for a person to qualify for that. They need to have a property maintenance code violation. And uh, two of the following statements up there that they need to, statement of eco, social economic disadvantage, they can't afford it. Seniors preferably and risk to life and safety. We do encourage these out in the community quite a bit and one that stands out in my mind that occurred about three, four years ago was a gentleman that we had some painting going on that we asked him to as a part of a violation. He's eighty-six years old, he's on the end of a step ladder painting. And I, it, it frustrated me and I wish we would have had a program like this in place at one time to help him out. Um, but what it does offer is a fifty fifty match for some of those repairs. If uh, for example, they need to replace a driveway or deck, we cover half that cost and so on and so forth. It's just another obstacle that we encounter. We want to try to eliminate obstacles and help people out. So some of the highlights were, were, or reimbursements were proposed or anywhere from fifty dollars up to two thousand dollars. And fifty dollars seems like a small amount, but when you're trying to put your letter, your, your house numbers, numbers up on your house, it can be an obstacle and we do hear about it. So here's another tool that I think might help. When we start looking at a roof repair, deck repair, which we have a lot of problems with in town, this could have a big impact and make it safer for people too at the same time. Uh, they need to give a quote from a qualified contractor or materials receipt. And following our, well, building code as well, they need to have it permitted and inspected. So we know that's safe. Which I think the longer term, we're going to, you know, that just adds the quality of our housing. Um, preference is going to be given to any life safety repairs or observed violations. And um, we see up there rental property is not eligible and owner occupied dwelling units only. So other examples that, that, you know, we're, we're going to be open to a lot of considerations. We want to look at these at a case by case basis because not everybody's needs is the same. Uh, updating smoke, smoke COs, that's life safety issue, repair decks, walkways. We, we've had a lot of problems with that with offsets, people tripping and falling, uh, dead tree removal, very expensive if you've ever had to have it done. And sometimes what it does um, is benefit both neighbors, especially if it's on the property line. So that works out really good. That's win-win there. Roof repair, demo, upgrading electrical panels, all these things. We're, you know, we're looking at each item by a case by case basis. And what I'm hoping is, is we can find some fruition to some of these things, keep them on a court. I mean, that's pretty much been our only tool sometimes on this and hopefully we're going to avoid that too. Uh, benefits, just like I said, we're, we're cost effective. We're keeping these things out of court, uh, court. When I say simple code cases, it's much easier for us to help people out than put them in a, already backed up uh, uh, court system, particularly due to COVID. Um, it's helping seniors and just disabled property owners too and maintain safety. And I think what it also does is make better use of our resources. We're not, not out chasing people down for, you know, again, simple code violations that we can hopefully resolve right on, you know, within a shorter time period. Um, and again, um, maintain that housing stock. Yeah, I think it's a win-win program and um, I can't wait to start it.
And I, and I would just add to that, um, our thinking on this one is we spend resources, right? Going out and inspecting and follow-up inspections, follow-up inspections. Can we use those resources differently and in a better way to help people, right? Instead, and these guys always hear me say like value add, like this is a value add service that I see that the city can provide to its citizens that need help from us. Um, rather than phone call and delay and delay and delay. You have frustrated neighbors. Why isn't this getting fixed? We're dealing with an eighty-six-year-old gentleman trying to paint his house or put up house numbers. Like we can see it, there's a quick fix, right? There's a quick fix here. So this is a tool to help us help those that, that need it. We're not trying to change, we've got, you know, issues that you've heard about that are behavioral issues. This is not going to change those, those properties, those um, uh, residents that have behavioral issues. These are ones with real financial barriers. Maybe some physical issues, those types of things. Um, just, just to help, so we can all move on and it is win-win as Chris said. So we're excited about this one.
Kara?
And so you're looking at this, um, especially when you're counting in staff dollars of going out there, following up, repeated following up letters. You're looking at this where um, it would be a net savings. Because rather than using staff time and staff resources to keep going and following up, you're instead cutting it right to the chase and getting the issue addressed.
That's why we're shields, that's how we're looking at it. We haven't counted the dollars and all, but theoretically, yes.
It's problem solving those issues that people want to get done. They're the ones who say, you know, I'm trying to get my uh, property updated. Like painting or I want to put numbers on or the deck is falling apart, but I don't have the resources. But they want to, to do something. So this one addresses that. It's not the other issues that we deal with where people have been asked to take care of their property, but they just keep having all of the stuff piled out in front of their homes. And yeah, I'm going to go here and then I'll go there. Okay. He was first. Okay, thank you. Uh, Dan G.
Um, just a clarification, this is not just for sixty-five and up?
No.
No.
When I look at that sixty-five and up, I just don't want to confuse our citizens where they go, gee, I gotta be sixty-five to qualify for this.
They have pretty good criterias that they have in. Okay, Dan K.
We've been talking about this for the entire time I've been on council and, and probably way before that. We've had numerous circumstances come up where we have people in a uh, socially economic disadvantaged position in a home trying to meet all of their obligations. And there's in some cases, maybe not obvious code violations, but deficiencies in the maintenance of the home that could be handled within this two thousand dollar match limit. So that's a four thousand dollar, you know, max price, right? Because uh, they're, they're obligated for fifty percent. So up to a four thousand dollar solution to the problem fits within this code cash problem or code cash solution. And, and it seems like this would cure a lot of circumstances where in the past, or even today, we're just saying you're, you're in violation and you have to clean this up. You have to get this done. And we know, especially today, more than ever in our city's history, we have uh, we have people struggling. They own a home, but they're, they're just barely able to uh, maintain it and stay in it and feed their family and have a car payment, all those things. And we, we love homeownership. We want them to be in homeownership and some get there just by a little bit. And then when maintenance issues come up or COVID, they don't really have the resources to be able to throw um, you know, fifteen hundred dollars to take a dead tree out. Or I don't know what it is. Like it's been a while since. Yeah, is it in that range? Yeah, I remember fifteen years ago paying eight hundred. I thought that was expensive.
My last one was two thousand.
Two thousand. And so, um, you know, where it's a dilapidated pool or if it's some structure, you know, that's rotting, uh, you know, there's, there's all kinds of circumstances. So I share your excitement for this. I know of circumstances today that this appears to be a, a solution. And instead of this never-ending cycle of trying to find a way to motivate or incent somebody to fix the problem short of taking them to court, which as we learned the last two years is impossible because the courts are backed up. We're kind of stuck. We're, we're on a, we're, we're both on AmeriGround staring at each other with no solutions. Now you can go add a solution and I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
So my question Jenny, do we have a sustainable fund? On how this is going to be because this code cash. You know, we have X number of dollars that uh, you're putting into it. Uh, when I read the background where you cobble together some money from different areas, but is it going to be sustainable?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so we have twenty-five thousand dollars um, that we kind of had parked in the budget for something like this in twenty twenty-one. That's still there. We plan to carry that over to twenty twenty-two and then we budgeted, we have thirty-five thousand that we budgeted for twenty twenty-two. So we'll have sixty thousand dollars. If we do the max at two thousand, I mean, that's helping out thirty people. We think that's more than enough for, for this purpose to get it started. We'll see how it goes. You know, when it comes to budget time again, if we're into this a little bit, but um, this, this is a grant. We're not going to get this money back, but it is better use of our resources swapping out inspection time and that kind of stuff to help solve a problem. So.
Okay, Kara?
Uh, and, and I will be interested. So um, as you start this, keep in mind, one of the things that I would be asking is what is the swap in? What's, what's the net? I want to know what the net is. Because if, if this is something that nets out lower, that makes this a much easier discussion. It doesn't mean that it's a no, otherwise. Um, but I am curious about that. Uh, because I, I do know there is considerable time spent back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. Um, and there's a cost to that. So I, I would be interested in that. So I'm not sure how, how you will set that up so that you get that, get that reporting.
Thank you for bringing that up before.
Before, right? Yeah, it's easier to, yeah, yeah, that's why I'm.
Why I am asking the question about, you know, is it a sustainable program going forward? And you know, where's, how is it continuing to be? And you know, where's, how is it continuing to be funded? You know, are we going to look at economic development levy to fund some of that? Because it was part of the options you had in your background.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so this is funded through general fund. And it's something that this is, this is kind of abatement. This is what we can, what we can do. Joel has reviewed the program parameters as well. So if we're ready, we'll move on to the home, our loan programs. And Ms. Madden has the background for that. And this is a little bit bigger of a program. And this is funded, would be funded through the EDA dollars. We have a hundred thousand dollars that we had earmarked in twenty, well, twenty, twenty twenty. I was like, that's gone. Twenty twenty-one, which we can carry over and then a hundred thousand in twenty twenty-two. So we would have two hundred thousand dollars for the next two programs that she's going to talk about.
Before you start, I just want to make sure that this code cash is for those people who want to solve the problem. It's not the perpetual violators. Of property maintenance.
Madam Mayor, there will be some discretion here. Just as it's one of those when we're working with someone, I wish we could do X, right? That's where it comes up to help somebody who's, who can't do it themselves. And you, you feel bad sending a third notice because it's, it's almost out of their control if they can't afford it. Cause, because they have other obligations.
Okay, very good. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so as Jenny mentioned, so the next two programs that I'll be speaking about with you this evening. So different from the kind of the direct cash benefit or grant from the code cash program. These would both be loan programs. So the intent is for a revolving program that may be at some point in the future as we continue to put our resources into that. That would be self-funded or through the payments on the loans. So the first program I'll be talking about with you this evening is a general home improvement loan program. So this would be a lower interest loan. For these home improvement purposes, a variety of avenues that somebody could take if they were to apply for something like that and how they could implement this in their, in their home. And so the idea and how we created this program is that it could be used in conjunction with other funding sources. Or it could be maybe what someone is going to, this is their entire funding source for the project that they would like to do. And the intent is for investment in Burnsville's housing stock and kind of maintaining that. Appeal of Burnsville and our values. And so highlights of this program, so the loan could be in an amount up to fifty thousand dollars for a fifteen-year term. It would be allowable on owner occupied residential properties, one to four units. So with that four unit, we would mean as part of a quad building. Those are individually owned units in that case. So there would not be income restrictions on the ability to apply for the loan program. But there would be a scaling interest rate for income. So those making percentages below area median income. Could qualify for a lower interest loan than somebody that's making a hundred and twenty percent of area median and above. There would be a valuation limit of a hundred and fifty percent of the assessed value of the home. If the intent of the program is for home values to increase, then we're, that's kind of our target area here. That it would be a very targeted program that came out of the housing plan from the Economic Development Commission. Was that we're taking into account the diversity of households in Burnsville, whether that's income, age, household size. So we're trying to be very targeted with these programs. The loan to value ratio not to exceed a hundred and ten percent. One key factor here is the debt to income ratio max on the fifty percent. So that would be more flexible than what we would see as maybe the standard average market percentage that you would see, which is about forty-three percent. As a standard. As mentioned, the interest rates. One of the things that we'll be asking for as part of this application would be quotes from the contractors for the work that is to be done. Or a materials receipt for any DIY work. And, and the projects would be completed and inspected before the release of those funds. And then again, since this is limited to owner occupied properties, they would be secured by a mortgage to the property. So it's not eligible for rental properties. And so some examples of what this could be used for, these are for maybe those larger scale, with the amount going up to fifty thousand dollars that they could apply for, for the loan. Kitchen remodels, additional living space or additions, garages, accessory structures. Or maybe something that's more related to life health safety and within the home, whether that's your HVAC system. Or something related to your electrical panel again, or some type of utility. So there would be a standard though, that recreational or luxury improvements would not be an acceptable use. So there's some more information about that in the policy that's attached to your background report. Benefits for this program, we want to be able as a city to provide this kind of flexible assistance for our residents to make improvements to their homes. So there are existing programs that residents of Burns will qualify for. Some of them have longer wait lists. Some of them have different income restrictions. We've been able to, we're not starting from scratch here. We've been able to reach out to other cities in the metro area as a whole that have programs similar to this. And talk about what works for them and. How is their program being used? What did they make, change about their program that made them have more people apply? So we've asked those questions and have come up with this policy as part of that research. So a benefit is that we kind of know that we, we've talked to people and have seen this working in other communities that are similar to Burnsville's demographics. And but we want to increase the home valuations and tax base in the city of Burnsville, maintaining and improving those neighborhoods. And we want to add that value as a service to residents, something unique that many communities south of the river maybe don't have as part of their. City initiated programs, but this is something that we would be able to have. Going to move on quickly. So what separates the second loan from the first loan is this is not only targeted by age for senior sixty-five and up. But that is also a deferred loan. So the payments would be deferred until the home is no longer owner occupied. Or several other kind of factors that would be that deferment date. So it would be a no interest loan to senior homeowners for similar home improvement projects. And again, to be a revolving loan fund. So as payments do come in, it would be continued to be funded. And. Again, the intent is for that investment in the existing housing stock of Burnsville. And so some differentiations between this program, while it would also be similar to the last one secured with a mortgage to the property. There is an income at income cap at or below area median income as part of this program proposal. As well as that age restriction of sixty-five and up. There would not be, there's zero percent interest rate and no monthly payments. A smaller loan amount of fifteen thousand dollars that that repayment is deferred for sale and no longer being owner occupied. And, and it would have those similar kind of qualifiers to different types of improvements that could be made. But that recreational improvements are paying down existing debt is not a part of what could be included for how you can utilize the funds. So again, examples of this loan use could be for accessibility upgrades to the home. Additional utility upgrades, efficiency upgrades, or just general repairs to the home. As part of kind of maintaining the, that quality of the home for the future. So benefits of this program, again, we want to keep seniors in their homes longer, giving this kind of unique program that somebody in their household could apply for. Where they can make this improvement. Let's say it is an accessibility improvement to their home. And that idea of aging in place that is so popular among kind of the senior housing community right now. With a main focus on that housing maintenance and repair as the key factors that we want to try to focus applicants on. We think this would be a good resource for those who may not be able to make monthly payments, whether that's a fixed income or some other scenario. But able to defer it as part of a sale for a future mortgage. And again, it just maintains and improves the home values within the city of Burnsville for these necessary upgrades.
So this type of loan could be used for maybe some ADA changes in the home. That's correct. That type of thing. Okay, thank you.
Question in the underwriting. For these loans. How are we qualifying? The folks to know that they can't get this loan from their local bank or financial institution resources? Because I think the intent, going back to when we talked about this was. We were going to try and provide something that they couldn't get on the private market, not just be in the private market of, here you go. If you're sixty-five and older, you can get this loan from us instead of going to your bank, right?
This one and the other one.
Yeah, really both. The home rehab, I mean, they're both to me. Home equity lines of credit essentially, sort of different versions of that. So what step in our underwriting is going to qualify them that they could not get it? Do they have to go get a, do they have to submit a rejection from two banks or something for a home equity line of credit? Or some sort of step like that?
Thank you. That's a great question. So there isn't a rejection letter type of step with built into either of the programs. But the, some of the underwriting, whether that's debt to income ratio and loan to value ratio are at levels that are different. From the standard banking or private banking market. So that would be part of how this program could be something someone could qualify for when they may not have been able to qualify. In the, at their particular bank. And then there's some more specifics in the attached policy about other underwriting guidelines outside of what I was putting on some of the highlights. Slides, but just as an example for the deferred loan with the zero percent interest rate and no monthly payment. That that's something that it would be a unique to something that could be a government provided program outside of the private market.
In that case, zero percent, no payment. Basically, we're going to loan you the money. It's much like. Richfield, Minneapolis have some programs for new homeowners where you can get up to ten thousand dollars to cover the down payment or closing costs. And you don't have to pay it back until the home, you sell the home, right? So it's helping getting people, new first-time buyers into a home. This is keeping someone, a senior in their home and allowing them to maintain or upgrade the home. The quality of home, which increases, increases our value. But I just, I, I still think.
Can we have them finish their report and then come back? Because those are very good questions.
I just, I want to know where in here we have that qualifier, because I, I can't support it unless it is, it is targeted to people. Who cannot get it in the private sector. And if we don't have that in that underwriting, then it's a great idea that sinks from my, my perspective.
And the other is that you also, I think if you go through your, your whole. Report, then you also talked about a third party that would be reviewing all of this. Rather than the CDA, which is. That's the thing that's different between this program and the CDBG program. So there are a lot of tools that are here. But yeah, Dan is right. We've been talking about what are the qualifiers?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, to add to that, because we're at the question part, I think, for Sarah's programs before I, I wrap up. But as she said, we do not have that in here. Getting your feedback, we certainly can add that, that they get a rejection letter or two rejection letters. From banks. Now, they are different programs. So if, if someone's loan to value ratio is over forty-three percent. And that's what the standard is in the, in the banking world. And that is as we understand it to be, they're going to get rejected. But the terms may be different for our loan, or our loan may be less than maybe what they were applying for. You know, there may be some different factors there. So it's not exactly apples to apples. Also, with the limit on the housing cap value on the home rehab program, you know, we're targeting. You know, a little bit more than half of the homes in Burnsville, right? The value I think right now would be about three seventy-five is where, where that comes in at. So it may be more advantageous for someone of lower income to get our loan, even though they qualify for something at a higher interest rate. But this helps them better, more, because the interest rate may be less because their income is lower. So by having them get a rejection letter, you know, could be costing them more, more money. We're not helping them out in that regard. But I, I understand what you're saying. We certainly can, can put those parameters on like we do have on our HIA programs, for instance, and some others. And I will say, these are, these are our programs. These are your programs, our programs. We can change the rules along the way. So if we start out and we're not doing any loans, because everyone's can go get them in the private market. Well, then what need are we meeting, right? So I certainly believe the senior programs are very popular, because again, we're dealing with much lower income people. Who cannot afford to stay in their house if they have a major home repair. So I always bring up in my mind, an example Chris Forsland was dealing with a few years ago. And it was a senior couple that lives in Burnsville and their roof caved in on their house. And they were on fixed income, both on social security. And they had all, they had a hundred, their house was paid for, right? But they could not get a home equity loan because they had bad credit and they couldn't make monthly payments. And they had no place else to go. They couldn't afford an assisted living place. They didn't have family members to go. And this is one of those, what can we do to help them stay here? They just need to fix their roof, right? And so this kind of program could help that kind of couple or resident stay in their home very easily.
And in your example right there, because of their income and their credit, they would be a candidate for this because they can't.
They couldn't qualify. Yes, they told us time and time again. So, yes.
I just wanted to speak to the declination letter and I'm wondering if that might have unintended consequences, because I don't know. Dan probably can speak to this or Brady's out there, but I don't know, you just walk into a bank and say, my credit sucks. Can I get a, a decline letter? I think there's costs and there's process and they have to run their credit. Which is going to affect their credit. So it might be worth just a little more discussion if that's, I, I understand what you're.
The underwriting process, I think, needs to be tightened up to.
Cause you don't have people taking advantage of the program either.
Who can get it elsewhere. If, if I can go get a loan in the private sector, I know this is available and it's a lower interest rate, but I can get it in the private sector. That's not what, to me, that's not the spirit of why we created these programs. Is just to take business from the private sector because we offer a cheaper rate for people who could get it there, right?
People that legit made, need help in our city. And I think we can, I think we can identify them through underwriting.
Yeah. And Jenny, if I remember correctly and reading some of this stuff, is that you have already reached out to some third party who have been doing some of this work. And so you already have some tactics that we can put in place that addresses a lot of this. And I think the next time you come around, you can address some of those things with regard to how we move forward with a program like this. And the sustainability and how we're going to fund it ongoing. And, you know, because I think one of the things that I read is that you would like a program like this to be managed by a third party.
Correct, Madam Mayor. We don't have the resources and yeah, that's personal information that we really don't want to touch, right? So, you know, we entered into this partnership with Center for Energy and Environment at the beginning of the year to do energy audits. They oversee Minnesota Housing Fix-Up Fund and they oversee a lot of these programs for, for cities. We consulted them to get, and we sent them our draft policies and got their input there. And they do a lot of, they do all the underwriting, right? And the servicing. So we certainly will have a conversation with them about. What we can do as part of that process to make sure we're not competing with the private market.
Because I think that'll get to some of the issues that you talked about, Dan K. Because in reading some of that, they have all of that in place. And so we can address all of that. You have another question?
Just to follow, I also don't want to compete with it if there's a program that the county or the state offers. And we talked about that in one of our development discussions is let's not replace what's out there. Let's, let's find where the people are falling through the cracks and let ours be the safety net that they can't get a private sector. There's nothing at the county that they can get or the state. And they don't, you know, we become the, the only option maybe they have.
And this is different from the CDBG program.
I was just going to say, as you're looking at funding these programs, I, I know we have a pool TIF out there. That's not going anywhere yet that we can use for economic development, waste management. We collect fees from on an annual basis. Hopefully they'll get their CLN and we'll continue to collect these. But two good ways to kickstart that, this whole process. At least to get it going. And even some ARPA fund, when you look at the part where we have grants, because we have to use ARPA for grants anyways. They can't do loans on that money. So that's, that's perfect money to use for some of that. There's, there's little pockets of money we have that we don't have to raise taxes to do this, is what I'm saying.
Report will, will address all of that.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as I understand, as I understand it, you'll be having a discussion at the all-day work session about some one-time funds. This is on the agenda, but we do have a small pot to get things going, you know, and we could do three of the loans and three senior programs. With the monies that we do have in twenty twenty-two. And then like we talked about, up to thirty folks with code violations, which I think would be more than enough to get started. And I think of these, you know, once we fine tune them and get them to, to where we're comfortable. You know, these are investments in the community, especially the revolving loan fund. At some point, you don't have to fund that anymore, right? You have enough money going in, going out, going in, going out, that, that you can move on and we can do other programs. And then I think the last question, the last slide gets to, do you support, do you support these programs? And we're just looking for direction on that and what to bring back. And I feel like I have that. I feel like you've said that you support.
You're getting that, you know, consensus that to support both the code cash. And this loan program, because it is different from the CDBG. So we are addressing the different constituency basis and their needs. And I know that on the CDBG side, there's a waitlist.
Always, always.
Always a waitlist. And so this can get at some other things. So we have three areas that can meet different constituency needs. Within our community, Vince.
It would be nice just to get maybe an annual checkup just to see how things are going.
Yeah, yeah, that can be a directive with on a not just monitoring, but you know. On a communication with the city manager, here are the things, this is an important program that we need to make sure, Kara.
Would it be out of line to treat these as pilots?
I don't think it's out of line to see how it works. We can look at it at the first year and then see how it's going. And see the the funding and and so forth because, and it'll be good to have someone from the third party that you're you're entertaining. To talk to us about the work that they're doing and how the programs work in in other areas.
We can do that.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you for doing this.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. And and I got, I just have to say, Melanie and Greg and Jenny and our staff. Thank you, you know, because we have these things as goals for us to address. You know, we can sit here and make all those decisions, but unless you have the, we have the resources so that you can do it. On top of all of the other work that you're doing right now. So keep letting us know what your needs are, because we can't help you if you don't tell us. So thank you. I think you have consensus about where this is. So, yeah, so you're going to just stay there.
Stay right here, Jenny.
Because the other item is yours and this is the proactive property maintenance. And this, these are our perpetual violators. And that we continue to have complaints from people over and over again. About the lack of care for their property, Jenny.
Members of the council, I did put together some kind of factual, not kind of, but some factual information in the background.
Okay.
Your.
We like some facts.
Your policy, which of course has been amended.
What I wanted was to see all of those pictures, but we'll get to those. There were a lot of them.
And the history, right? And so, you know, last time we talked about this, boy, it seems like we're, we've talked about this frequently over the last five years. But I take this as, Madam Mayor, you and Councilmember Gustafson wanted to bring this up at a council work session. I don't have a recommendation. I don't have a PowerPoint. We're interested to hear your discussion. We'll bring back any information that you want or photographs. And of course, Mr. Wold spoke at the last council meeting. And so he's here tonight too, and I'm just here to listen and get you any information that you would like to bring forward, so.
Yeah, and Joel, if you can come to the table, because what I might be suggesting, you're going to have to. Tell us if we can go down this road or not. Because these are consistent perpetual violators that eat up a lot of staff time. You know, they say twenty percent of.
Eighty twenty rule.
Yeah, the eighty twenty rule and twenty percent takes up a lot of staff time and eats up a lot of money. And these are folks who you spend so much time because they don't take care of their property. And the neighbors are frustrated and they, and they want something done. And but because of our process, our process is so laborious and and project protracted. That and also the the. The court system doesn't like to look at these issues that have to do with property maintenance. So for me, one of the things that I was thinking, and Joel, I don't know. I think Jenny, when you and I were on that task force and we looked at what Poon Rapids was doing. With some of these properties. I'm wondering if we ask a property owner to please clean up their property. And you, we give them two weeks or whatever to clean it and they don't do it. So I don't want to come back and then they have to wait again, because this is some of the frustrations that people have. And then, and then we go to court and then that's another three or four months.
Six to a year.
Or two a year and 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 the and the neighborhood is up in arms. So Joel, can we say if they don't do it, that we say to them, we will. Hire someone to come in, clean their property and goes on the tax roll.
Oh, God.
With their consent, yes, mayor, not without their consent, without going through a judicial proceeding. We'd have to get a warrant, enter the property.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, the statute allows for hazardous buildings and hazard life safety issues. Simple nuisance abatement is more problematic, but we would have to get a court order to enter onto the property and remediate it. With the owner's consent, we could do that. And we have on occasion gotten consent for some types of mediation measures or remediation of nuisance conditions.
Yeah, and I know that we have done that in the past and that's why I am bringing that forward and to say, because there's. A lot of people who are just frustrated, Dan K.
Well, one example comes up, there's a commercial property that's abandoned and the neighbors have called. At times and because their weeds are three foot tall and. And we, as a city, have gone in, cut and mowed, et cetera, and build the property owner. Now, that wasn't a tax, a property tax add on, it was just a bill that we sent. Did we have to get property owner consent to go in and do the cleanup and mow and all that?
Technically, we should on anything that we're removing property that has some value or argued value of items. And of course, that's in the eye of the beholder of junk versus treasure. But we have made an exception on some long grass entrance for development property or abandoned properties where we post them. Enter and mow, but the advantage of that is the cost is very low. There's no removal of personal property or possessions that involve the taking of. So the the liability exposure for the city is very, very low in those areas. If it's development property is a condition of development, we usually have a lever in those situations. But aside from that, if it's if it's long grass and weeds, we have, we have done that. But basically, under our legal procedures, we are not to enter private property without either consent or a warrant. And that's been reinforced with rental properties inspections and some other things in the last five or six years in the court system. So the way it is right now, the the exceptions are exigent circumstances or something extremely minor where we've done that. But if it's, if it's junk vehicles, if it's structural in nature, repairs, demoing. Removal property, those types of things, we would follow a normal hazardous building or abatement proceeding, which is a court proceeding. Which is where we run into a long, long, difficult situation because of the of the pandemic. And courts being pretty much congested at this point.
And so what's the solution for us? Because we have properties and we have photographs where a property would have. And quite a few of them on their. Front of their house on the driveway. Not only do they have cars without wheels, but couches and tires. And the the front yard looks awful and I feel bad for those neighbors in that neighborhood. And then there are other properties where they just have junk that they haven't even removed. Or taken to the to the landfill, but it sits there and they sent these photographs.
There's no easy solution. We have to make a commitment and stay through the process and not give up. And keep working it, even if it is a two year process through the courts. Where people say, well, I thought it was a Zoom meeting. I didn't have to dial in. I apologize. Where they don't show up for for trial or pretrial schedules, warrants get issued. There's pressure on us to say, well, we should dismiss those case cases. You'll hear it in the media and other places are people saying. Why is the city going after these people for this particular reason? It seems very minor, but we just really have to stay the course, be committed to the process and not give up. Having it be a easy solution is not going to happen anymore than we're going to be able to solve carjackings overnight. Or we're going to stop people from speeding or shoplifting or any of the other types of of incidents that we deal with. But the idea is to address them in an organized fashion and keep grinding away on them. And hopefully, like we did with the rental properties in the past.
Yeah.
If the city takes that step, which took, you know, eighteen months.
Yeah.
It did have a ripple effect. Our credibility was up with other rental properties. Because we had established that the city was not going to just walk away from it, that the city.
And we shut them down.
Would shut them down, would require it to be improved before the rental licenses would would be reissued. And that had a mitigating effect on some of the other rental properties of saying, well, the city will mean business in the same thing year. You know, if if we quit on some of these, then the behavior will continue and maybe spread. But right now, I think we have six active code cases pending in court. Two are rental licensing properties. Two are fairly significant value cases. Council's been informed of those two previously. So we don't have a large number of them that get there. Code enforcement has been able to work with most people and get cooperation and voluntary compliance. But for the ones that we have in court right now, we're not going to drop. We have one individual called several about a week ago saying, I missed my appearance. There's a warrant out for my arrest. How can I take care of it? And the answer was, that's a, that's a situation of your own making. Clean up your property. That's how you resolve the issue. Wanted us to dismiss the case. We're not going to dismiss the case. But you might get some pressure, you can make some reaction if the individual is arrested. As a result of not showing up for court, that's a judicial decision. We didn't, we didn't do that. I mean, the courts, when they have a schedule, if you don't show up for court, the court will issue a bench warrant. Now, how that's handled is is evolving as well. But but basically, you know, when he called last week to say, you know, can you excuse me? There was no excuse granted, no extension granted. So it sounds harsh at times.
Yeah.
But most of the individuals that were in court with control their own outcomes, because we're not seeking punishment in these situations. This is not a traffic stop where you issue a ticket.
No.
The the city's goal has really never been punishment, but rather compliance with the standards that are set.
And so that we can all live in harmony and that we have vibrant neighborhoods and a vibrant city. And we say we want that, but so what you're saying is that we stayed the course and that we just continue. To issue citations and then. And then it just goes on for a year or so.
I mean, as you know, legal process is long and involved. It requires parties to show up repeatedly in court. Some people will realize that if that is what they're facing, voluntary compliance is in their best interest. Other people, it needs to be demonstrated. I mean, we had situations where people have had the warrants issued from multiple times and saying. Well, I didn't know I could have a warrant issued for me and the irony is, well, you had the warrant issued here for twelve months ago initially. And, you know, at that point, the persuasion of the excuse is not there.
Jenny, one of the things with the Beard neighborhood. And when when Mr. Wold and the neighbors brought that, that. The code enforcement said that there was no violation. Because even though there is all.
Met, Madam Mayor, I don't. I don't have any of that information today. If you want the follow up information and the details, we can get that to you. None was asked at the council meeting, and so I'm happy to get that for you.
Yeah.
It's my understanding, though, about half of the complaints on that property were not violations, I think, in the past year. So we get a lot of calls of people complaining about stuff and they're not really violations. Too many cars in the driveway. It's not a violation. It's different, maybe different than what was there with the, you know, the last owner or last weekend, but that's not a violation. So certain things, you know, the toys in the yard, that's maybe not necessarily a violation if it's the the season of use. And so, so and adding on to what Joel said, you know, our goal is compliance. And in the code world, in my experience, dealing and having the support of Campbell Knutson in managing this. Sometimes ninety percent is good. When you're dealing with a property that has a lot of issues that you've been dealing with for a while and they finally get out there. And they mow the grass and they get ninety percent of it, that's good. That's good enough. Because it's taken us so long to get to a certain point. And so it may not be a hundred percent, but that's a success in our eyes. And so there may be a difference of opinion as far as what the expectations are with code enforcement. But but in dealing with challenging properties here in Burnsville for the last twenty years, sometimes that does happen too. But we'll be happy to bring back the detailed information of of the Beard Avenue neighborhood. There was a a lot of different circumstances there and, you know, there's more information to that.
Yeah, I would like to see that because I would like to not only help that, not neighborhood, but all of the other neighborhoods that. Well, let's just say in the last year, all of the complaints that we've received and all the photographs that we've received. You know, what are we doing with those properties? And are they active?
Madam Mayor, can you repeat what you what you just asked for?
So it just the complaints that we received in the last year.
From citizens?
Yes, from citizens.
The hundred complaining. You want the numbers or you want specific information because they're in the hundreds?
I know.
What are you asking?
I know there's really bad, bad properties. I mean, I've seen the pictures.
I want to get you what you want.
Well, let me ask you this. Which properties out of all the complaints that we got in this last year are now active in process? That's on its way to court.
Sure, Madam Mayor, we can get you the information on the court, the six that Joel talked about. And we can probably get you those that we've issued administrative citations for, that it went that far. Probably not just the education letter that we do, probably not just the first file, you know, like eighty eighty some percent, ninety percent. Get resolved after that first letter. So we can, if we narrow it down to that in the last year, we should be able to get you that information.
Yeah, because I know there is a whole lot. I mean, I see it because it comes in. I'm, I'll go to Kara and then to Melanie.
And I'm interested in what is the percentage of complaints versus. The actual. Violation, not like the education letter and they, oh, well, crap, yes, okay, I'll do that. But that we have to take that second step. So more important to me than the actual numbers is is the ratio. Yeah, thank you.
Melanie?
Just has that answer. I want to try to answer that because it it can be subjective too. About, I'd say two third, two thirds of our complaints are are probably result in a violation or a code case being opened up. The other one third generally does not require that. I mean, somebody, again, back to Jenny's example, too many cars parked in the driveway.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Or it's alleged or it's, no, it's not on their property. It's on your property. You need to fix it.
Yeah, no, I get that because I've gotten that from neighbors across and it's a a supportive housing. Or some kind of, and then there's all of the cars for all of the staff that's on the driveway and on the street. And it creates congestion around that neighborhood, but yeah, it's not a violation, but.
Usually we have to do some digging and figure out what they really are looking at. Or they, the property that we, you know, we've always asked, give us the specific house number.
Yeah.
Don't just tell me it's on the corner from so and so because we're going to plays over. We're too busy. And I think that helps narrow it down. We don't want to be on wild goose chases.
Okay, Melanie?
Madam Mayor, Chris covered it for me. I was going to say, a complaint doesn't equate to a violation necessarily.
Doesn't equate to a violation necessarily, so.
Yeah, right.
That's what makes this a little, I mean, this is a nuanced.
Yeah, and 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 I get that. It's, it's the ones that egregious that you look at it and and. I empathize with the neighbors when they live next door and it's just piled up. In the front of the house. And they send pictures and I drive out there and I said, yep. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't like living next door to that. Yeah, then.
Um, if we're making a wish list for Jenny, I'd like.
Call me Santa.
One of the things that we discussed at the last council meeting um. Revolved more around um, response times, service.
Yes.
Timely email responses. One bit of information that came up in an email. In November was that this department is severely short-staffed. And. We have added more than a thousand more rental units in the last year, so. It'd be good to wrap our head around that. Discussion a little bit deeper. Um, I think based on the neighbors. That was a major point of frustration um, along with.
Yeah.
The, the property itself, so.
No, you're right. Response time. Yeah, Melanie.
I was going to say, Madam Mayor and Council, um, we haven't cut any staff in that department. We did, we do have an employee that's out for a medical reason. Um, but we, we have not, we have not reduced the staffing or the resources available to.
We've got it for a thousand people.
Well, I understand, yes, and. Um, I'm not debating the pros and cons of the code enforcement program. I think Chris and his team do an excellent job. Um, and we switched from one mechanism or one process to a different process. So it it's awfully hard to compare. Apples to apples as we think about what what that response looks like.
I was just referencing an email. That was sent to a a a neighbor that said we continue to be severely short-staffed. Um, and so it'd be good to get. Maybe a bigger picture.
Yeah, and I saw that. I'm going to go to Jenny and then Dan G.
To, to respond to that, Vince. Um, we have been down. Now, this is a fairly small department, so this isn't a department of twenty and you lose one person and it's not noticed. There are three inspectors that inspect all of our rental properties and handle all of the property maintenance for the city. For the last two years, with COVID, we did not replace an open position. And last year we had people out on COVID and out on disability with medical. We've had two inspectors and so. One of them was brand new that started in July and thank God we got that person or we'd be down to one inspector. And the volume of the weeds that we had this summer was astronomical. I mean, when we say we're doing the best and and our staff has told me. Professional staff that have been in this business for decades, this is the worst year of their career, is twenty twenty-one. And it's short staff and it's expectations from the citizenry all over. Um, and not enough resources. And so it's just, it's a challenge. We hear burnout in other industries too. But that's what we're talking about here and um. You know, we got processes in place or the process is the issue? Is it the expectation? Is it the resource issue? You know, it's a handful of things. That kind of make this up. So, you know, it's, it's going to be great when this area, this work group. Gets back to full staff. They're not there yet today.
Okay.
So we're going to go into year three and um. You know, we're doing the best that we can with that and um.
So when Melanie says we didn't cut anybody, it's just that you don't have enough staff. You didn't, you you lost some and you don't. You didn't replace them.
I will, I will say, Madam Mayor, we, they're repurposed because of all the apartment units that we have added. And so that that work shifted to more life safety issues with smoke detectors and things like that. Than tall weeds and grass. When we have to decide where we're going to spend our time and we have someone complaining because they don't have heat in November. You know, or someone complaining about trash that's left out, we we're going to go deal with the person with the heat. And so when you have a lot of that struggle of priorities, uh, what's more important today or what's on the schedule? That's kind of what happens. And so. When we get up to full staff, I think then we'll have a full picture. Um, and it's uh, of three full inspectors of that. Um, if our process change again, then we may need more resources to meet expectations, right? But we haven't been full staff for the last two years, so it's really hard to judge then to today, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Kara?
And and I I completely understand that because I I do remember when council was informed that um. One of our inspectors was injured. And, you know, then you're. I mean, you're, you're just short. Um, and while this was going on, you know, just to jog people's memories. Uh, like everyone else in this country. Uh, our code enforcement was told, hey, guess what? You're working from home. And so all of staff had to just do that, whether, whether that was something you were prepared to do or not. Um, staff was thrown into doing that, just like most everyone else watching this meeting. Had to like, had to figure that out and had to figure out childcare and had to figure out. You know, how were you just going to live and and try to get things? And do your job and be hooked up at work and you're used to certain. Processes of how you do your job and now you can't do it because it was based on being. Face to face and just walking to someone's office and that type of thing. And so our staff was dealing. With multiple things like that during that time period. And then it was like, oh, well. Figure out, figure out how to inspect a place, but you can't actually go there or interact with other human beings. And they had to figure that out too. And they did it. They did it. Um, so while, while we're looking at everything, um. I just want us to keep that in mind too, that all of that was happening. During that time, so. There may have been and continue to be some lags. Due to that because we're down a person, um, you know, the the lag that we had before. Trying to just have good communication happening when you're, you know, now everyone's at home. All of those things took place. So. Just keep that in your mind that. And it, and it doesn't mean that. You don't still service the community. Because we still have to service the community and our staff did service the community. But what it does mean is all of those changes that. And challenges that you faced at home and really struggled with. Our staff had that exact same struggle during that time. So that's what I want to add into that.
Jenny?
And I will just add, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, Councilmember Schultz, you bring up a good point, you know, when we couldn't get into units. Maintenance got worse on apartments. And so our inspectors were spending more time, again, prioritizing life safety. Heat over weeds and garbage. So, um, so there's that. And then also. This year, you know, we kicked off a whole new software department in community development. So our admin staff, we have one admin person. Chris has one admin person to deal with all the thousands of rental license and to, you know, field complaints. Also is the admin to make sure the software setup right so we can serve our customers better, right? So she's. She's working on that while she's trying to do everything else and manage COVID and find a laptop from IT, right? And find an iPad to help someone out in the lobby. I mean, that's one person. So, um, we did kind of take on that. Looking long term, that's a good thing for us, right? But so there there had, we have not been without our challenges. That's, that's for sure. So. I'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah. I think one of the frustrations and this is to follow up on what Vince uh. Brought forward when Mr. Wald talked with. Is there a, do we have a standard that when we get emails, we try to get back to people within a twenty-four hour period? At one time we tried to do that.
Madam Mayor, I will tell you, for me and community development, um, it's like twenty-four to forty-eight hours, but Greg can speak to.
Yeah.
And to follow up.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, it's a great question. As a matter of fact, we are bringing, I am bringing together a a group of staff to uh, reestablish. What we're going to call the public experience or customer experience standards across the organization uh, that we will. Obviously involve the council in that conversation and and come back to you with the commitment that we're going to make to our community when it comes to. Uh, even the simplest things, like uh, the amount of time that that we plan on uh, taking or feeling is reasonable to respond to emails.
Yeah.
Um, phone calls, those types.
Because there was a time with um, tracker. That we said to people. If your complaint came in before three o'clock. You will have someone from that department get back to you the next day or something of that sort. I think the frustration that Mr. Wald and others have said is that, you know, they. Email and don't get a response. And you all have seen that when I get an email from somebody. I usually respond and just copy people and say. I don't have the answer, but somebody will get back to you. So they know I got it.
Absolutely.
You know, here, here, here's who I copied. And so and so will get back to you on that. I think then they know, okay, my email was received. And it's a common courtesy that we need to have. Jenny?
Madam Mayor, I'll bring you the certainly the timeline on Beard Avenue, but um, I I believe it's going to be when. Somebody had a medical issue and was out and we don't have access to their email. So if someone's dealing with someone specifically. They're out or they no longer work here. They get somebody else a month or two later. I mean, unfortunately, that happens and I I. I'm going to speculate that that's what happened in the case that Mr. Wald was talking about because he talked about the great service that he got in twenty twenty. What happened in twenty twenty-one?
Yeah.
We had staff issues in in the department in twenty twenty-one.
That's why I want a staff plan.
It's, it's medical. I can't say more than that.
Yeah.
But I will leave it at that. It's just one of, it's unavoidable.
Yeah, Venable's had all of our passwords.
Yeah, and Greg, thank you that you're putting a team together to take a look at that because I think it's part of our. Reach out and community engagement experience.
From a, from a staff perspective, we've talked a lot about, uh, we've talked a lot about the experience that that people have with us. Uh, and I believe, we believe uh, that it's important that that we create consistent standards across the organization to make sure that. If if you, if you come into City Hall or you need to deal with us, that we not only meet those needs, but we create a great experience that we. That we keep our community wanting to come back to us, uh, rather than thinking, oh, good, I get to deal with the city. That it's a positive experience that we keep people coming back. So uh, that is very much our commitment and we're going to work on it together.
Yeah, thank you. Because for me, you all have said, here are the values that we're going to practice within City Hall. You're going to collaborate, you're going to innovate and you're going to. Be excellent in which, so I'm going to hold you all to that because you adopted it. You said this, this is how we're going to uh, behave and respond to people. So if you're going to collaborate, innovate and 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 practice excellence. In the work that you do, then I want that. I want our people to say. In Burnsville, when I, you know, they're on top of it.
I have one more piece. Um, I got a text from our county commissioner that said the county board. allocated money to the county attorney's office to get caught up. She didn't have the exact amount, but they're going to be hiring temporary attorneys to get everything caught up so that they're not snubbing noses at these types of cases.
Okay, that's good. Thank her for the information. Yeah, thank you for the information, Liz. Okay, Melanie?
Well, and I don't want to belabor it. I think these are all good points that have been brought up.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's resources, there's COVID. There's backlogs in the court system. There's a reality that the court system doesn't take this very seriously. I mean, there's lots of factors here, so.
Yeah.
Um, I want to say that I I do think Chris and Jenny and our team are incredibly responsive and um. By and large, I think our whole team is. So uh, I hear kudos more than I hear complaints. I will just say that.
Yeah, so, no, and and I'm proud of the work that our staff does and what they deliver each and every time. This whole property maintenance thing is a headache. I think to all of us because we hear about it. So. What's the conclusion for tonight? Joel?
Press forward.
Press forward. And stay the course and just make sure that we just stay on top of all of this.
Try to do better.
Okay.
I mean, I, the, the court system is inundated as well. They're doing the best they can with limited.
I get that.
And they have felonies and gross misdemeanors and very serious offenses. So sometimes judges will actually enjoy the code case because they can make some progress with it. We've had pretty good luck with with judges issuing the warrants. Um, you know, with one of them that occurred with a court appearance in November. Um, the judge basically told the individual, you've got about thirty days and if you don't. Get your act together, you may be going to jail and that was. Had, had some impact. So uh, we've had some success with it, but in the grand scheme of things, there the. Backlog is going to take probably a year to to work its way through yet. But like I said, we only have six cases currently in, in, in litigation right now and. On at least. Three of them, three of them, I believe, right now warrants have been issued because the defendants have not shown up. So if they get stopped, their life is going to suffer some inconvenience.
Okay, Melanie?
To your question, Madam Mayor, what next? If the council wishes to change the policy and provide further direction to council or to staff, we're happy to implement that. But at this point, we're operating under the, the policy and the parameters that the council has established. And that's, I think Jenny or Chris put that all in the, the um, background. So we're happy that, we're happy to.
So the thing is, there's a lot more than just changing the policy because I'm hearing about. A lot of factors. There's staffing issues. There's all of these other things. So I think there are things that we have to all take a look at. We can put a, it's like I said, we can put a policy in place, but if you, you have other factors that in, that. You know, are challenges to all of this, then we have to take that into consideration and that and and not. Put it up where staff would fail because if you don't have the resources that you need, you don't have, it includes staffing. I don't want you to fail. But we, we need to find a solution as we continue to move forward with all of this. Yeah, Dan and then Melanie?
When do you anticipate you'll be back to three full? Do you know when you'll have the third person back?
We can't speak to that at this point. Um, we always hope that we, that'll be sooner rather than later.
And is there any other resources to? Temp standpoint for this particular area? Is that it just so specialized that it really doesn't exist out in the marketplace for hiring temp?
We have, um, Madam Mayor, members of the council in the twenty twenty-two budget, a. Full-time seasonal person um, that will start like April through October. So, so we used to have this position and then it just is a training ground, right? Because we get people in here and then they move on. And so it wasn't, so then we went to consultants. Well, then they.
Yeah.
They made us their training ground for their consultant. So we're going to try this again and see where we get. Um, we may be before you asking to make it full-time if we can't, if we can't find anybody. It's hard to find people. We're going to do our best. Um, we also have um, an intern uh, budgeted in the planning area and use them perhaps as a resource for some code enforcement for weeds at peak times. And this kind of thing. So we're going to try some things that we haven't had on the table for a while. Um. It's a, it's, it's a challenge to find folks to do this work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Part of the reason I'm asking is I wasn't aware that you got down to one inspector when you were down to. And it, and obviously there, you've enlightened us on some things that I wasn't aware of, of how. Deep the problem was with your department, department as far as illness, uh, medical leaves, et cetera, that that took three down to one. Um, and so I, I have to wonder if there was. Um, or there should have been an attempt to go out and get some temp help. So we could at least get to two or even back to three during that period, even if there was going to be some overlap because you couldn't predict when people are coming back. Because, you know, I know that you said, as you noted, we, we went out to um, consultants. Um, and, and they used us as much as we use them, but even that would have been okay too because I, I. I don't think it was prudent for us to go with one inspector for as long as we did or even two inspectors. When three was what we really needed to support the city in the right way. And, and that just put an additional strain on your department that I don't think was necessary.
So Jenny, because you have, you did not have, you had no wiggle room, none whatsoever.
I just want to clarify, we were down one, there's three inspectors. We were down one for like the last two years. So we've had two.
Just two.
But then. One gets COVID exposure and is out for two weeks, you know, uh, someone goes on vacation, everyone needs a wellness, you know, so.
Right.
It was on and off. And then we had a new person start to fill the vacant position. So now we have to train somebody and get them up to speed. So. yeah, I just want to make sure you have the.
You've had one and a half, one and a quarter, one, one, two.
You had no wiggle room. And you had, you do not have the capacity to address all of this.
And I want you to know, we did look at bringing temp help back in when we found out someone, you know, we were going to be short staffed longer than we thought. But by the time you get them up and rolling, by the time we start advertising for the seasonal position in early 2022, right? It just, the snow's going to come and things are going to come down that area. It just wasn't worth, so we did explore, I just want you to know that we did talk about that and what our options are and try to make the best decision. And, and Mary, you're right, we, we don't have a lot of resources to, to maneuver when we have challenges.
Well, and just wrapping up.
No, I won't belabor it.
Okay. Is that one, is that Greg, you are, you're putting a task force so that we can respond in a timely fashion to all of this? Jenny, you're going to continue to look at all of this stuff. Joel, you're saying we're going to kind of press on with all of this. We need to let our, our community know that we understand what's going on and that we're going to do what we can to help with all of that. The procedure that we have in place right now is to press on with legal action. First, we send a letter and educate them. And if they don't comply, then we start the citation. Yeah, Dan?
Back to the backfilling of the people with one person out and unknown return. Is there anything stopping us from, other than maybe the budget allocation, but to hire an additional person? If we have no idea when they're going to be able to come back?
We're down one person right now and we're working with, I can't really speak on personnel stuff at the meeting tonight. What I'll say is that I've always given our departments broad latitude. Let's figure out how we can get somebody in to help us out. This is a tough position. It, the market has never been deep for it and it's even more difficult now. You know, say it takes two weeks to say goodbye and it takes five months to say hello. And that's on the unfortunate cycle that we're in. And Jenny's team is not the only one that's facing some of this churn and the challenge with, with getting folks on board. So I think that's just the reality that we're facing right now. We have done all sorts of creative things to get folks on board and use the resources we do have available to get service to the community. That's our ultimate goal. We know that.
Yeah. So Mr. Wald and members of the Beard neighborhood will continue to stay on top of this. And, and you've heard that we have some, it's a lot of factors involved in all of this. But our attorney is going to continue to press on and some of the things that we have to do. But we also need to know, we also know that we have to have more staffing. How we get around and getting all of that done. So and I, and I promise you, we're, we're going to continue to keep on top of it. Thank you.
Yes. Well, I just want to complete that point. I don't want to continue to see this department run on two. And if there's, if the third person is, and I understand it does, you know, it, it doesn't matter why they're out, they're out. What can we do as a council to get the third person back in so the department can operate normally?
You can.
Because it sounds like there's an indefinite date.
Answer that tonight, Jenny, but at our all-day work session, I would like some feedback.
That might be a better venue for this discussion would be the all-day work session.
Because, bring it, work with us. We can't help you if we don't know what you're dealing with, Melanie.
This is, this is probably more of a budget discussion than anything else, which we've spent the last eight months talking with the council on.
Exactly.
And, you know, we're, we're happy and that's part of the, the agenda for the all-day work session is looking forward on what are those challenges that we have. And when we have, you know, we work within the constraints that are adopted by the council. And so that's, that's what we're, that's what we're doing. And we are working diligently. We're working smarter. We're working probably smarter and harder for some days. But I mean, there are just some limitations based on where we're at today.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm hearing is you don't need any help right now to backfill that third person. It's more of a structural problem in your eyes. So it's a budget discussion, not a, can we hire a consultant to fill that spot as long as it takes until we're back to three?
What I would say, council member, is that we've gotten all sorts of discretion on how we can fill the positions. The market is really difficult for that. I think that's.
Well, and I haven't heard that. I mean, I haven't heard that we did try and fill that third spot and we couldn't find anybody because there's no resources available to fill.
We wouldn't be filling a third spot. We would be creating and filling a fourth spot.
Well, that's a, that's more of a structural discussion. I'm looking for a stopgap to just backfill the third person for the time being.
Well, and.
And that's why I think they're talking about a temp.
Yeah, yeah, that's why. And so.
And that's the challenge. So, so let's make sure that this is on the all-day work session and, and it is. What you're challenging us is that there is going to be, there are budget implications. But this is the reason why I keep asking for a staffing plan. Because if we understand that and we know how you're challenged with all of that, then it will have budget implications. And that's a tough thing, but we have to have something, some way for us to address all of this. So I think we, we've discussed it in a way that Joel has his job to do, Jenny. And it's good to know that Greg has a task force that you'll go to address so that we can respond in a timely fashion to everybody. And so thank you. And then we'll have this on the all-day work session to continue this discussion. Okay. And then we're going to recess for five minutes and then we. Because there are a lot of. Okay. We are back and we are reconvened. And so the next item is the Burnsville Leaders Future Discussion. Melanie?
Madam Mayor and Council, as you well know, Burnsville leaders convened a couple of years ago. I think the goal was to build relationships amongst the various boards. The mayor and I meet with the chamber president and their board chair, as well as the superintendent and their board chair. I think one of the goals was how can we build on that strong relationship within our, the rest of our boards? Over the time together, I, I recall my first meeting with this group. It was a full house. It was, I think, you know, pretty much everybody was there. We were at Diamond Head. But over a time together, throughout 2019, we talked about what's the future of it. We talked about joint marketing and branding, inclusion and diversity. And then COVID hit. And much of our attention really shifted into how do we respond to that? So earlier this year or throughout 2021, we've tried to pull together a couple of meetings and we really just haven't seen the attendance that I think we would like to see for it to be a good use of everybody's time. So at our last meeting with the mayor and the school district and the chamber, we said, let's all bring this back to our boards, get some perspective on, you know, really what are the overall goals for this group? What are your expectations? And what do we want to do to make it a good use of your time? So with that, I'll just turn it over for kind of an open, open dialogue, get some feedback and we'll report back to our, our friends at the chamber and the school district.
Okay. Dan, G?
Well, if I recall, when we started putting this all together, Jennifer was very instrumental in making that happen for us.
Hey Jennifer, you want to come to the table?
Carwaring.
Yeah, sure.
It was very instrumental in that. And it was really about bringing everybody together that really wasn't working together. We were all leaders in the community with our school district, our chamber and the city, the CDB, everybody was pretty much engaged in it. And over the years, we did kind of come together to get on the same page with the messages we were putting out. And I would say that it worked. I mean, it's I, all the years I've been around, I've never seen us work closer with the chamber or the school district and that as we, as we have been the last few years. And I think this, this has been a big part of why that has happened. I'm not sure what direction it can take from here, to be honest with you. I mean, I, because I think he accomplished the goal of getting us all together and talking to each other. And that's happening. And that happens on a regular basis now.
The thing is, we don't have a lot of people showing up for the meetings.
I get that, but I'm, I'm not saying we have to continue it. I'm saying they've accomplished their, their goal was to get everybody together. We all are talking now. We're, we're having joint meetings with the school district and you have meetings with the chamber and things like that. So those things are happening and, and it was a time that that really wasn't happening. And, and a lot of times the, the messages we're giving, where I think we're, a lot of us are on the same page on the message. I think everybody kind of goes down that you belong here path and, and it's, it's branded that way throughout. I know even with the, the CBB who's sitting here right now too, or the foundation, that's what's happened. So I think, I think the goal was accomplished. And if people want to continue to get together, that's fine, but I, I don't know.
Okay.
This, um, I kind of interpret this more of like maintenance. You know, a good way for all of us to kind of keep up on each other and what we're doing. I know we're all capable and able to do that with the tools that are available to us, but I, I think these are beneficial for many reasons. Because I think we can help each other. And I think that's always been the goal is to help each other when we can and provide updates beyond Facebook posts. So I would be more than happy to continue this. I know my personal attendance struggled because 8:00 AM meetings are a struggle for me with. Getting your children dropped off.
Getting your children.
I'm on cab duty every morning. So oftentimes it was, you know, an earbud in one ear and, you know, blippy in the other in the van. But I, I would love to continue these, but I, you know.
Do you want it quarterly, twice a year, once a year? What do you think?
We were on a quarterly, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it seemed to be working until it wasn't. And I think a lot of that was because of COVID and Zoom and people got busy, but that's just my, my two cents.
Kara?
I, I mean, I liked it. I thought we were making progress. And I thought we had good things in the works. However, when people stop showing up to your meetings.
It's not compelling.
I mean, they, they have voted through their attendance or lack thereof. So I think people have told us a direction and we can decide to take that or not. Or, or we can revamp. Maybe you revamp and then people are like, oh, now that has value. So that's, that's my opinion on it.
Okay. Dan, Kay?
Well, I, I think it's accomplished its mission. I, I like getting large groups of, you know, elected department heads, business leaders. But I do, I am a bit more bullish on why we have a meeting. Let's not have a meeting, just have a meeting. Let's have a purpose. And if we, unless we can come up with a new purpose, I think the maybe pausing it for a while is not a bad idea. And over the next year or two, as we come out of the perpetual COVID effect and, or, or the indefinite end of COVID, that we're just going to live with it in various forms in our life for many, many years, will. that we're just going to live with it in various forms in our life for many, many years, we'll get back together again. And then I think that could have a, an effect on attendance. People will want to get together and talk and et cetera. There is a factor, I, I agree a hundred percent with council member shows, people vote with their attendance. And when it's, when it's virtual and you're still struggling to get attendance. You know, that maybe is the subject matter just isn't there. And so I've got other things to do that are more important, more demanding. And people triage those decisions and decide that, okay, this one, this isn't going to cut it anymore until we have a bigger purpose. I'm still very much in favor of, of working more closely with the school district. And on the, the marketing, the communication, the perception, all of that. And I know a lot of that, we sort of got it going and it happens now. But I think we have to keep nurturing that and get more aggressive with it than what we're doing even now. So, and I, and I think the chamber and CBB and organizations like that should be at the table. And maybe some others should be added.
Well, I like the relationship that we continue to form and ended, and what we achieved together when we were all there. But I wonder if we have the right goals and objectives that will be compelling for people to get re-engaged. And so I think that's the discussion. Do we have goals and objectives that would bring people to the table? And say, yeah, let's dig into this and let's work together. Because I think there is value when we come together as a community and, and present that kind of leadership. But I agree with, with Kara. When people don't show up, they are communicating loudly to us. That it's not compelling. And like Dan says, you know, everybody's busy. They decide, you know, well, you know, I can skip this. And so I think the issue for us is, do we have goals that we would say, yeah, this is maybe a meeting or saying, are there things that we think we can work on together?
If I can just.
Please, please, Jennifer.
The, when we started this in 2017, it was kind of a throw it out there and see what sticks. We met and we said, you know, let's get to know each other a little better. The city council, the chamber board, the school board, and let's, let's see what happens. And a lot of the discussion with the type A people around these tables was what's our goal? What's our objective? What's our outcome? You know, why are we meeting? What are we doing here? And we said with that first meeting, calm down, we're just meeting because it's important that the leaders of our community know each other.
Yeah.
And, and so that was really the first objective.
Yeah.
Was for the leaders of our community to know each other.
Yep.
And we said, anything beyond that is great. Do we want to meet again? And the group said, yeah. And we said, we started setting some goals and objectives. But I think when the chamber threw it out there on the table in the beginning, it was literally a relationship building thing. And I think you're right. I think some tangible goals and outcomes have come over the last three, four years. But the, what I would hate to lose is the relationship building part of it. And you're right, a lot of people in these groups have relationships with one another.
Yeah.
But I think when we found when COVID hit, that the synergy between our organizations allowed us to respond in a very unique way and really come together as a community with all of our leaders in sync, having community forums within the first 30 days and moving forward together. And so I would, as leaders change, as elections happen, as seats change, I would just want to, if it was once a year that we got together. And I think to your point, there's, I, I think Zoom also killed us at the end. Part of the voting with your not showing up was I just don't want one person meeting. And the robust meetings Melanie walked into were our in-person meetings. And so I think in-person is a factor. I think putting the relationship piece front and center is a factor.
Yeah.
And then there's some things we've talked about that we haven't done. Is it bringing in an outside speaker to talk about an issue that we're all interested in? And then having the relationship building part? Is it, you know, we know the updates on what everybody's doing is good. It's good for the organizations to hear directly from one another, though that's good. Having time before and after the meeting to chit chat and have coffee and get together is good. What are the other components that matter to you all? And the school boards having the same conversation, the chamber board is having the same conversation? So that in 2022, we can say, is it one meeting? Is it a speaker?
Right.
Is it this? What is it? And so we appreciate, I think the dialogue tonight was really good and any other feedback you have would be great.
I would say one meeting, but do it where we all come together and then have a little social afterwards. Because that's about nurturing that relationship. But having a discussion, you know, and have it in the afternoon, you know, instead of the morning.
Yeah.
Instead of the morning, having, having it in the afternoon. So we come together and, 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 and have a short meeting and then have a social time where you build and nurture those relationships. Because you're right, elections take place, appointments onto boards take place, people move in and out.
Turnover. Yeah. I mean, you see that more on the chamber board. I mean, we have, you know, every year we have new people coming on.
Yeah.
And so it'd be nice to continue that relationship building piece.
I think once a year, and you know, let's for 2022, once a year and, and see where it goes. But I would say, and then shift it to the afternoon.
Have a little meeting.
Everybody make accommodations.
Yeah. And then, and then we can have a social time afterwards. Yeah.
This is good feedback. Thank you. We'll, we'll report back and hear what the chamber board and, and what the school district says as well. And come back to the council or report back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Now we're going to go on to focus groups. Okay. Does anybody want to change or?
Can I, real quick, Madam Mayor? Just wanted, there's a couple.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, Melanie.
No, no, that's, that's all right. It's been a long meeting. Couple of quick things. Just a correction on your sheet for the planning commission or staff liaisons. Deb Garrison, Sarah, could they kind of share that? And then Regina's the alternate. So we'll make sure that gets corrected on the final. And then for the multifamily housing managers group, I think that's a relatively new, I call it liaison position. I'm trying to pull it up here. And staff would, the council can, can decide if this is still something that's relevant. Just want to make note that hasn't met since COVID.
Yeah.
Um, talking with both Jenny Faulkner, who's our current liaison, and then Tanya Schwartz, police chief. We, we feel from a staff perspective, it best belongs in police. So we would, we would ask that we have a police liaison for that. And then as we're looking at 2022, the, the officers in charge of this is kind of looking at what that's, how it's going to be structured for next year. So whether it will go back to an in-person meeting like we've had in the past, or whether it'll be maybe more online, or maybe it'll be FAQs, or maybe we'll do videos. I just want to throw that out there to let you know that we're, we're looking at format and it might look differently than it has in the past. And Kara, I think you've been the liaison for that as well.
From the very beginning.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So just want to point that out to the council, like we would suggest that police be a liaison and that the format may be subject to change.
Okay. So as you look at where you're at, does anybody want to have a conversation with somebody and?
And for that, like so, and I have been on multifamily since it started. And yes, we haven't met since COVID, but we did meet before that. So if, if someone else would like to take that.
I could say it won't be a heavy.
It's, it's not. It's, it's not. And it's actually really interesting because you, you know, you have all these property managers and that type of thing come in. And, you know, you do find out from their perspective, what they're trying to do and their challenges and, and, and that kind of thing.
When do they meet?
It's, it's very infrequently.
I think spring of 2022 would be the earliest.
Yeah.
Vince, and I don't even know, like I said, they're, they're looking at.
I've been to two and I've been there since the beginning and I did not miss.
It's kind of like the black dog watershed mission. Do you want the DCC and then I'll take that? And I would even take planning if you don't want that either.
I, I would take, I would, I'll take DCC. Unless you want to move up.
No, I, I, I'm enjoying what I'm.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you don't. I will take, I will take DCC.
Do you want me to take planning then?
Go fish.
I don't care.
Just because it's like, if this multifamily thing's kind of not a heavy lift.
Then you can do both.
I can do planning because they are trying to meet more frequently with their liaison, which is great.
Quarterly.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they are, they're trying to do it quarterly. I, I mean, I don't care unless, is there anyone else that wants to liaison with planning?
But then I was thinking I would take that, but then.
Yeah, I know, I know. You're doing.
Parks and planning. I don't know. If you want to just leave that as is, then I can just swap with you on.
You, you want to, what do you want to swap?
If you want me to, I could take multifamily housing managers if you want to take DCC.
Ask for a draft pick in next year's lottery.
Yeah, no kidding.
More than just this.
Yeah. I, and I will, I will take DCC and you can do multifamily.
Okay. And then you'll just stay on planning and I'll stay on PNC.
Unless someone would like to be planning liaison as, as much as planning loves me at their meeting.
I wouldn't mind if you, yeah, just leave it, just leave it.
Okay.
Anybody want to revisit their assignments?
Good.
You're good? You're good?
I've been on transportation for years and I'm just now learning it all. So I don't think it's a good time to get off.
Yeah.
It's really difficult.
It took me. And, and there's a lot of moving parts right now.
Massive learning curve and there's so much going on in the, the AAM drone area. And I'm getting pushed by MBTA to get on leadership, which I've been resisting for a long time.
You're on tab, you better stay where you are.
Yeah, that's also a biggie. I, I just finished my first year and I, I've got some, some initiatives for next year that I'm starting on right now.
No, stay where you are. Anybody else?
We're about savage.
Well, I'll continue to stay on savage.
Because again, I can't, those are tough for me.
Yeah, this, it's early in the morning meetings. It's eight.
Every other month. Every other month, Thursday mornings, eight.
Yeah. So it's Vince and I, so does somebody want to do that? Because you, you, you were on that once and then Vince.
I did it for a year.
A year. And then Vince.
And then Vince.
And Vince is now two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I stayed on because nobody else. So I'll stay.
And that is a good slot for mayor.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, so you want to stay on? It's in the morning and I know that's tough for you.
I can do the summer meetings.
Will you show up if we feed you?
Yes.
Okay. We'll just keep you on. How about that?
Because Ani's home in the summer, so I can make early meetings. But that's like one, I think.
Yeah. Because it's every other month.
As long as everybody's okay with me being.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I, so I have all those like metro cities, policy committee. You know, I have housing and economic, I have municipal revenues.
Any of that?
Improving service delivery, like I'm, I'm open to that if, if that's of interest to anyone.
I already have.
I already, I have mine that I have on this.
I mean, I can keep them, but I'm just saying if, if someone's like, dang, I really want that improving service delivery.
Yeah, you go for it, girl.
Sweeten the offer with something else that people really want.
Do you want improving fiscal futures?
I don't care. I mean, I don't care if you want us.
I don't either, but if you're looking to switch it up.
I mean, I don't care.
How about if you two negotiate that and then just tell Mac and then the rest?
I'll be on you. I'm fine staying, of course, on that one. But if you want to switch it up.
I'm, I am honestly good either way. I don't, I don't care. I'm, I'm just offering.
Neither of us cares. So I.
I don't want to. Okay. All right.
Okay.
Well, that was exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Clarification, I'm showing the differences. Kara's taking DCC, Vince is taking multifamily, and that's the only change.
Yes.
It appears so.
Yeah.
You're holding on to planning then?
Yes, I am.
We love you there.
They do.
You're a good fit for that.
I am. I am. We have a good rapport.
All ready for the first of the year.
I know it.
Okay. All right. All that, that's all done. So now we are moving on to the next item. And this is roundtable. And council talked to you about the Burnsville Community Foundation and if they would like to come to the table. They want to present because we had talked about helping with a match or not a match, but take, if they raise the money and, and the public art is going to go onto public property that, and they raised 90% that we could close that gap for them at 10% or to just, and, and it's capped at 20,000. And, and so tonight, they're before us to talk to us about where they're at and what they would like us to consider. Michael Esch is the, is the president and Mary Jo has been the lead fundraiser on a lot of the sculptures in the heart of the city and also in our parks at Alamag Park. So Michael Esch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mary Jo. Yes. And, and, and the board members are also present from, and I'd like to introduce them if they.
Ready folks to head?
Okay. And they're the main members of the board.
Thank you for having us here tonight, council and mayor. I've given you a letter that we've, it's been a collaboration letter. I didn't write it. I presented it on behalf of the Board of Directors. Skip Neaus and Mary Jo and I all collaborated on it. We've had many drafts of it. I've gone through many, many ink cartridges and anyway. It's pretty self-explanatory. I don't want to allow the talking tonight. I'll let Mary Jo do the talking and she can explain about the fundraising. It's been a challenge with COVID. It's been a challenge getting that much money together. And we're, or are so close that we're hoping that with your graciousness, we can conclude the project and move forward with it and set the installation date. Mary Jo?
I would just echo that we collaborated on the letter. It is self-explanatory. I believe that you are familiar with the project. I did bring pictures if anybody wants to see them. But our original budget was $155,000 for the project. And that was before we picked an artist. So once we picked the artist, we have now got our budget at $180,950. So technically we've already raised, you know, all of the money that we thought we needed. And we're about $16,000 short. We got another commitment for $10,000 this morning from a very gracious business owner. But we're $16,000 shy of our complete goal of 180,950. And we would like you to consider that as part of the city project.
So members of the council, as Mary Jo and Michael reference, that this project has been, has gone before us. We approved it. We approved the site. Has gone before us, we approved it, we approved the site. Um and uh so what they're asking is that can they move forward? Uh and get our blessing that we would give them the funds to close the gap. So that they can work with the third party. To begin the installation process and hire the. The contractor who's going to do all of that work. And they would like to know that they will have all of that money so that they can move forward. And they do know that we are working on on the policy, but we had already agreed on what um. What we would like that policy to look like and that it would be a. They had to raise the the ninety uh ninety percent of it and then they can come in and ask for the ten percent. To close the gap and we have said that it it um the cap is at twenty thousand, so. They would like us to. Consider this so that they can move forward. Okay, Vince is giving a thumbs up.
Absolutely.
And so there's. Three say that we move forward with the with the amount and the amount that you're requesting that is left is sixteen thousand.
And eighty dollars.
Sixteen thousand and eighty.
I'd like to propose sixteen thousand and seventy nine dollars.
Okay, and Kara?
I I mean, I I. I will not oppose this, I would feel more comfortable if if we. If we already had. The policy, like you have the policy and then you have something. Come before you, so it's not the project that I object to whatsoever. I just wish we had the the policy because then it. It it gives. An appearance of unfairness where one does not exist.
If I could add something, please.
Yeah.
Um I understand and I appreciate what you're saying, I had the same concern. The position that the foundation is in, however, is that we committed to this project three and a half years ago. It's going on city property. Um it, the site has been approved and so I I realized that both the council. And the Burnsville Foundation are kind of in this melding position and we would just. Ask that you honor and pay homage with us for our first responders because this is a really important project.
Yeah, and and Kara, I understand, we had directed staff to work on a policy, we don't have a policy.
I know.
So the thing is, we need to move forward and this is extenuating circumstances, but it's something that we've been working on. The direction on what the policy should look like is already. Given to staff, they're just saying, can we? Can we move forward with this and get the money so that you can, they can uh move forward with the with hiring the third party? Folks.
It's about scheduling, it truly is.
Yeah, yeah, so. Which I don't know when, yeah, Melanie.
Uh this predates me a little bit, but um following council's kind of conceptual approval of this. I went back to Garrett, who'd had some previous um experience with working through some of these projects. Um and he had, apparently there was a previous project at Sue Fisher Fields where we kind of had a. Kind of an agreement with the uh with the group and we've we've proposed, well, maybe absent having having the policy ready, we could. Model it after that, so we can move this project forward and not delay, so that's why you're not seeing a policy in front, because we had talked with the mayor about. You know, maybe there's another kind of a past practice that we could honor and and then move forward on the actual policy, understanding the timing is an issue. So um from a staff perspective, we understand the council's. Goals with this, you've kind of given us the framework for the policy, I can respect that we don't have the the actual document for you.
For sculptures on public property, for sculptures on public property, but but the the what you're referencing is the it. I think it had to do with the concession stand, Sue Fisher.
Yeah, it was, it was maybe not a perfect match, but it was enough, there's enough similarity that we thought, well, maybe we could model. This approval after that action, so that's that's kind of a little bit of explanation on kind of where how we got to this point here today. But staff um has is supportive of, you know, making sure that the council's wish can. Follow through and the the broad parameters of the policy have been.
Could you tell me just a little bit more about that?
About which part?
Um about that previous approval.
Um so as I understand it, there was a, there was a commitment to um raise money for a project and the council essentially said. Um we will, we'll go ahead and build the project, then you'll kind of pay us back for it, so there was kind of a uh an agreement, mayor, you might want to.
I do under.
Okay, well, let you speak to them.
No, yeah, no, you're right, but they wanted to build the concession stand and run it and all of that, but. Then we gave them money, but they they um they paid us back.
Okay.
But this one is is different in the sense that this policy that we said.
Grant.
This is saying you raise the money. And if you get at ninety percent, we will help you close the gap. Uh the last ten percent and we cap it at twenty thousand because when we talked about it, we didn't want. But it all has to be in public property and the thing that we didn't want, why we kept it at. Twenty thousand is that we didn't want somebody going into a million dollar project and then the the ten percent is more than we can afford. So this is not paying back, they've raised the money.
Yes.
And this is about the the last twenty, the last ten percent.
I I think the goal is, we we we're under a timeline, they're under a timeline, so we want to try to figure out a way to. To move this forward because I understand you have to get a contractor in place to do some work.
It's scheduling right now.
Exactly, and so we wanted to make sure that we weren't standing in the way of having that happen.
And the thing is, you want to have this placed and have the ceremony and all of the planning around that um in the spring or else.
Yeah.
Early before be it it be in June and before summer.
That's the goal is to have it dedicated and before we can do that, we've got to arrange for the concrete, we've got to arrange for the engineering. We've got to arrange for the landscaping, we've got to arrange with the city for the lights to get moved and flagpoles.
To get.
There's a lot of schedules that have to. Now together and. We're in December, so we have five months, we got to get on some schedules if we're going to really get this dedicated in. The spring of twenty twenty two.
Got it, okay.
Okay, you got unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
This is a winner project.
Yeah, can't hardly wait to see a place. Yeah, thank you, everybody for coming in.
You belong here, right?
Yeah, and thank you so much. Yeah, thank you, yeah, okay. Um reports. Vince.
Um, I got nothing.
Okay, this is the last time I'm gonna say this, Amy will be here next week to talk to us about the C V B, so that's coming. Tomorrow night is the citizens task force and if anyone's interested, we're talking about liquor licenses.
Okay.
Join us on Zoom. Join us on Zoom.
Yeah, join us.
That's actually a fun area.
Yeah, yeah. Kara?
Uh okay, so um I do have two things to report back from uh D B B. Uh number one, um the board did vote to approve the contract to have. Design nine. And flesh out some areas and research areas of. Of how this project could go in the future. I will say that um I I was a no vote on that. The no vote that I took on it was. D B B has contracted through design nine before. And this is an update to that plan and to also challenge that plan and see if it's, you know, still working and so. I, as a general practice, I don't think it's it's good to have the same company do that, you want a different company to do that. However, the other company, their bid was crap, I mean, it just was, it was crap. However, how we also. Put the bid out there. Perhaps if we had done it in a different way, we've might have gotten more persons to respond, so there is that. Um but the the other reason why is um. The board members who were there previously that are still there, I I, you know, one of them and and, you know. And there the chair said. Um I had vowed to never work with them again because it was awful and I'm like, you know, if you're if. If you're looking at working with a consultant that you already hate and were disappointed and felt that you did not get good value out of the last time you worked with them. Voting to work with them again, probably not a good idea, but. Never know. Sometimes people divorce and then they get remarried and it works out, so we'll see. Um so the second thing out of uh D B B is we did request a memo of. Benefits and possible challenges and or adverse consequences of. I I continuing to engage and then just in the in the. Dakota County broadband in general, staying in the the joint powers agreement um and then also looking at both I net and C net. And that discussion came about because um. Pretty much almost no one understood what the benefits were or thought there were benefits that were not there, so that was an interesting discussion and one of those examples was. We talked about if there's line breakages, right, okay, that's not maintenance. So if you think that those costs go into the pool and you get help with that, you don't. You, there's not cost sharing with um. Locations locating. You get a discount kind of like, you know, a Sam's Club membership on purchasing, but that's not a shared cost, so. Uh there was just confusion over that, so we're going to have that put out in a memo and brought back to everyone so that we can look at it. Uh the third thing out of there was uh we had had the uh task force look at. The definition, do we need to change the definition of what I net is and what C net is and. They tried to come up with a solution where the I net is just member cities. Like that's all it is and that's I net, so not school districts, not anything like that. And then they came up with C net, but like a bunch of subcategories of C net, so like other members. Are seen it, so like Burnsville is not only. I net, but we would be C net member as a subcategory so that if you wanted to work with a neighboring. City like Lakeville, you both had to also agree to that category as well. It got really complicated. So I think. Not meant, the they were trying to make everyone happy and as a result, no one was, no one was happy at that point. Um but but they were trying to solve challenges that we have, which is. If we want to change the definition of I net to include like working with your school district because they're not really a commercial customer. You know, they're governmental agency, we need to open the joint powers agreement and do we want to do that or not? So we're gonna see how that goes, the memo is going to be the first step and then we're gonna come back. To that that definition, so. I mean. Half a step forward, maybe two back, but you know, we're getting there, we're getting there. Um but we are, we are trying to hash these things out and have something, have something workable. For members that that is of value to everyone um and. Continue the discussion of what do you really want out of the D B B, you know? Because we have, our cities have different needs, we're in different places, the the county is in its own place and has its own needs, so. Yes, sir.
When you talk about opening up the J P A to school districts, would that be? Just any school district that was wanting to gain access or would you have to open that up to school districts that already have access?
So I'll clarify that, what I mean by that is we would have to open the J P A to alter the definition to. Take school districts out of the C net category to place them in the I net category.
As institutional.
But a school district could sign on as in the joint power, they they absolutely can't do that.
Dues and participate like a city.
But they would need to pay dues, ha, 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 um so. Uh it, but you know, but we were coming back to the discussion of. What what do you want out of the D B B and and what would be of of value and. Um and I think when we started talking about. What are the benefits? Some of the cities were saying, well, wait a minute, I thought, I thought we were doing a cost sharing in this because. You know, my goal for my city is we need to lay fiber, like that's what we need, we don't hardly have any fiber laid, so if there's not really. Cost sharing for layering, laying the fiber. You know, I have a question on this and other people are like, well, okay, me, I was saying, I'm not paying for your fiber, like Burnsville's not for your fiber, so. Um so there, you know, there was a little discussion of that.
It surprised me because I was always in the the cities knew they had to pay for their own fiber, the bidding just happened through the D B Bs to consolidate everything.
Right, yeah, you know, and they were talking about like the benefits are, you get marketing. If you, you know, if you wish to market to companies. You get engineering and planning assistance. You get maintenance, although there again, there was the discussion of what do you mean line breaks are. Are under maintenance, like that would be maintenance and it's like, no, that's not maintenance and so they're like, okay, well. Define maintenance. Like I define it out, so you know, we're just gonna get that memo and just have everything be very clear, just very clear.
I would think a slice line would be covered by the insurance that you guys carry. Yeah, so.
We know, we ours, we've paid. You know, which Tim, you know, Tom was there and he's like. We've had them and we paid ours, like that's what we did.
Yeah.
And so, you know, and then other cities were like, first they were like, oh, that's good because I'm gonna pay for yours and then they were like, oh crap, but then when it's mine, I have to pay for mine. So you know, there was, there was some angst.
Yeah. Pay for your own, we paid ours. Okay, great. Is that it?
That's it, I see, I was the long one.
Well, we, no, we have to go, Dan.
Nothing.
I I got plenty of stuff.
You have nothing.
I don't believe you.
Okay.
Move good journey.
Wow, okay, I just um. We didn't have our savage Burnsville uh meeting and so uh but the municipal legislative commission. Um always, we we met at Prior Lake and so. We did honor a outgoing representative who helped us a great deal on housing affordability and that was Alice Hausman. And then we also recognize uh Dave Osborne, uh city administrator of Eagan who's retiring. Okay, and then we had items that are all administrative budget work sheet, um renewed the contract for our. Lobbyist and then they worked on the um J P A and the bylaws and that that'll come to us because anytime we make any adjustments or amendments to that. It has to come back to every city to uh approve it, so that's that. And then we approved the legislative platform, the biggest thing, uh also you all got the um breakfast agenda for. The legislative breakfast, that's going to be in Eagan and that's on the twentieth, but the biggest discussion was around the housing. Issue and that will continue to be a big one, it's going to be a big one at the legislature and um. That was a huge discussion, we'll continue to have that discussion until we meet, but. My. Concern is that. my concern is that housing first is pushing this to make cities be responsible, the assumption is that city, you fix this problem. But if you look at the cost of housing, there is land costs, there is labor, there is material and all of that are very high expensive costs. Our fees, if you look at the math on all of that, is a small part of all of that. And so for me, I just said, we need to educate the legislators. They're pushing it on to us, when in reality it's not just us, because they wanna take away our local control on all of that. So anyway, more to come, but that was it. Tonight, you heard from the Burnsville Community Foundation, we had a good event with uh, our uh, holiday lighting, that went well. And um, we're still move, now moving forward with, with homage and focusing now on the installation. And that's it, oh, we had the Metro Cities uh, um, approval of uh, of the policies. Melanie is the president and presided over the meeting and all items were adopted. And that's the end of that, that's my, okay, anybody else? Melanie, Greg, Michelle? Well, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned by acclamation and I am just
I'm stunned.
Stunned. Surprised.